Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Sweetwater County, Hora County Commissioners Meeting this Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. At this time, I would like to announce we do have a quorum present and also that Commissioner Johnson is excused for the day. Before we do our pledge of allegiance, I would like to take this moment, have everybody please stand and take a moment of silence, and I will explain why before we stand. This last week, we lost a very, a community person very near and dear to us. Not only was she near and dear to many of the students in the school district as an educator, but also she was near and dear to us because she was not only the spouse of Commissioner Johnson, but she was a wonderful mother and a wonderful person. I can only say that the number of trips around the state in the last five years for me, going to Commissioner meetings, not only when I would go with the Commissioners and people throughout the state, state electors, would say, "Hey, is Wally Johnson here?" The comment was, "Is Wally and Harriet here?" Harriet is a very big part of this Commission and a big part of everybody's lives, and that is why I'd like to take a moment and stand and have a moment of silence and condolences not only for Wally Johnson, but for the Wally Johnson and Harriet's family. Please stand for a moment. Thank you. Now, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to comply with the Constitution of America and to the power which it stands for, foundation, under God, in the best of all, where the liberty is just as well.
Thank you. First order of business will be the approval of our agenda. Commissioners, I would like to notify that we need to remove Tab P., which is the resolution for Welcome Home Wyoming Program. It was at the request of the presenter. They're modifying the resolution and are going to present it on March 17th at our next meeting. Then also, I would like to amend the agenda and add in, under other, approval of public depositories for our Treasurer, Rob Slaughter. Commissioners, do you have anything else to add? Go ahead.
I would like to remove Tab Q., Strategic Planning. We haven't gotten quite as far along as we would like for an action item, but I will speak briefly about it in my report.
Okay, very good. Removal of Tab Q. Commissioner Lloyd, was that yours as well?
Yes.
All right. So with that, we have the agenda to be amended by removing Tab P., removing Tab Q., and then adding, under other, approval of public depositories. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the schedules as amended.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the agenda with the amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Next is approval of the minutes from February 18th, 2020. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes, February 18th, 2020, as presented.
We got a motion for approval by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Acceptance of the bills, which is approval of the EAL, EALs, and approval of the bonds. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bills, the EAL and the bonds, as presented.
You got a motion by Commissioner Smith to accept the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, you'll notice our agenda has been moved around for county residents' concerns. We will move that again in the future, to this point or right after our public hearings, because they're a public size for 8:30. Our public hearings are so, but first, we will vote of community residents' concerns. If anybody would like to address the Commissioners at this time, please stand, give your name and who you represent, and we're more than happy to listen. Community concerns. Good morning, sir.
Dallas Coons.
Yes, Al.
I would like to address my concerns over the sewer line that they want to run out by Love's and the being paid for by the six penny tax. I thought that six penny, you couldn't get it unless you were incorporated. We could not get any help out there for our water system last year because we weren't incorporated. It cost each homeowner, lot owner, approximately $10,000 for a lot. Now, it looks to me like there are one seven and a half million dollars to run a sewer line for Love's truck stop. They made the statement that was one of the big concerns was sewage. They told us that they would have state-of-the-art septic system and treat that septic so good that you could drink the water. I'm still waiting to get them that first-class water. I think it's wrong that Sweetwater County, the residents, that have been so good about supporting that six penny to have it spent on somebody like Love's truck stop. Residents that live out there, they can't afford to hook up. They're already $10,000 in debt. That's just for water. Sewer's going to run a heck of a lot more. I would ask the Commission to rethink that.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. And we still are in the conversations for the six penny and that type of thing. Thank you, Mr. Coons. Appreciate that. Any other county citizens' concerns? Any more county citizens' concerns? One more time. That part is closed. With that, we will move into our next agenda item, which is the public hearing on budget amendments, and we have Ms. Berry here. Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. We have two budget amendments this morning. The first one is Resolution 20-03-CL-01. This is a Sweetwater County budget amendment for the county attorney's office. It increases the expenditures in the general fund for county attorney capital by $2,000, and it decreases the expenditures in the general fund, county and county operating, by $2,000. So essentially moving the money within the county attorney's office from operating to capital. This was requested to pay for a laptop. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Berry?
And we will need to open up a public hearing before, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions first. Okay, at this time, we will open up Resolution 20-03-CL-01, budget amendment for the county attorneys, which is $2,000 out of operating in the capital. Is that correct?
Yes.
And again, the floor is now open for a public hearing. Any comments from the public regarding this budget transfer? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Hearing is closed. Commissioners, regarding Resolution 20- or 20-03-CL-01, Sweetwater County budget amendment coming out of the county attorney's office, which decreases operating by $2,000 to the county attorney's capital of $2,000. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 20-03-CL-01 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next one. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution 20-03-CL-02. This is a sweetwater county budget amendment. This increases the expenditures in the general fund for the events complex in the amount of $22,981.05. It decreases the general county reserves cash carryover by $22,981.05. This is due to the health insurance increase only.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? And also, this needs to be addressed.
Questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Lloyd as liaison for the complex.
This is just a presentation from last time without the mill levy difference based upon the fact that, you know, there was some, in my opinion, there was some miscommunication to the component units during, with the raises of the insurance last time to compensate for what was really unexpected costs. So I would move to support it personally.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up Resolution 20-03-CL-02, which is a budget amendment for the events complex, which takes $22,981.05 out of the county cash reserves and places it in the general fund of the events complex, $22,981.05. We will now open the floor for public hearing. Comments from the public? Yes? Please state your name and who you're with.
My name is Kate Neal. I'm a former, I work at High Country Realty, and I appreciate the Commissioners reconsidering this and actually solving it at least for this year. I feel like this is going to be something we're going to have to deal with yearly. I don't think it's going to go back down to increases of 5% for jumping 20% this year. We're probably going to jump it. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor? Hearing is closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I can't pull my screen up. So Jeff, I move that we make a motion to move Resolution 20-03-CL-02, a Sweetwater County budget amendment, to take $22,981.05 out of the general fund and put that to the events complex.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution 20-03-CL-02. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bonnie. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we will move into our next topic, which is Commissioner Reports, and since Commissioner Johnson isn't here, our first Commissioner up is Commissioner Lloyd.
Just want to start by just reiterating my condolences to the Johnson family. It was doing well during this time of great mourning. So, a couple of things. I had quite a few board meetings over the last couple of weeks and liaison appointments. I met with the library two weeks ago on Tuesday night, and things progressed really well. I'm progressing well with the library. I'm really excited to see the expansion of their children's center. I know I bring that up quite often, but it is going to be pretty amazing and a great addition to this community. And really appreciate the work that Jason and his staff and his board of directors do. They really make a positive impact on this community. Also, had a meet, also represented the Commission at a meeting for Southwest Counseling, the Mental Health Board. Some really great presentations. A couple of the highlights, I think, is we were given a highlight of what it's like to be a direct support worker at the Southwest Counseling, and there was a little bit of a celebration and thank you to those guys, to their employers that do the frontline work. Also, we discussed the sliding fee, and we also discussed the legislation and how it's affecting their funding models at this time. So, but things continue to be fairly strong over there at Southwest Counseling. And the last was, we met with the events complex. And I don't know if I was the most liked guy at the events complex board meeting, but they, but pretty good meeting, discussed the future. Director Larry Lloyd from the events complex did send us all an email asking us to consider this accounting tax reinstituting. I think you all received that email. The water project due to a couple of reasons. One of them was they kind of felt like they couldn't explain the events complex without the ebb and flow of the addition of a water system, and he had also mentioned some health and safety issues of needing that second water. So that was something they'd like us to consider. Also, just talked about the different events that they have coming up that we presented to us at the last meeting, and so we continue to go out and recruit events throughout the community. So, outside of that, just some various meetings with department heads. I know more will also touch on this. We didn't get as far as we wanted on the strategic planning, and we are working toward that, have some mechanisms we're going to be putting in place and some resources we're reaching out to. And I think it's just a bigger task than I expected, just because we've gone from never really doing it to, we want to do this right. So I'm excited the next period, the next meeting, we'll be able to start putting some groundwork into, into what I see as not only strategic planning for us, but to eventually be tying, well, you know, that's going to be all the county. It's going to be our departments, it's going to be our department heads, it's going to be our elected officials. But I also envision eventually bringing in some of our local legislators as part of that process, and also the municipalities, and coming up with some solid long-term plans for the community. And I'm excited about the shape we'll go within that, in those directions. And the last is, I always like to give some community shout-outs, and I'd like to give a shout-out to the Green River High School wrestling team. Whether they're the state champions or not, we won't know through a hearing. It's a great group of kids that I've actually had the pleasure to know since they were, most of them, I started coaching them when they were six years old. That team had five state champions, Clayson Mealy, Tommy Dome, Kate Flores, Peyton Tucker, and Don Martinez, and one runner-up in Kate and Lloyd. And then I can't forget in Rock Springs, A.J. Kelly won a state title too, but what a great group of kids. And I got to tell you, I love living in Sweetwater County. And my son and I were talking about everything that had happened in the last couple of days the other day, and watching the Facebook feeds and the different thing that come through. My son actually said, you know, that are really lucky, because whether we win or not, we have such great support from this community. And I think that just, you know, kudos to those kids, but what a blessing to live in this community and the support that people continue to show each other. So just wanted to congratulate those kids for their efforts, no matter what the end is. And then the coaching staff has done a phenomenal job leading those kids. So Coach Josh was new to this group. So kudos to that group for the work they did. So that's what I have to do. Any questions?
Questions for Commissioner Lloyd. I got one.
Yes.
In the conversations with Southwest Counseling, what's the progress look on, look like? Have they had a conversation about the portables that they received, has donated, as far as getting those set up with their original plan? Have you heard anything?
I'd have to follow up, because that wasn't brought up at our last board meeting, so I need to get up.
I know they're sitting there, and I know there's a plan to get foundations under and put together.
Well, I'll reach out to.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Director Akers, and when I have some information, I'll share that with the board.
Thank you. I guess I'm up next, and first of all, I continue to work with the liaisons and that type of thing. I did miss a couple liaison meetings because I was down at the legislative session this last week. Got two, three days down there with legislators, working on different bills, and I think we're all monitoring pretty well bills that are high interest and that type of thing. And that's moving along, and some are dying for all the right reasons, some are moving on for the right reasons. Some of them, we have every right to be concerned about because they are going to impact funding and that type of thing for the county, but it's still great to go down there. The one thing I would like to share is the courthouse, or not courthouse, Capitol. The Capitol is now open. The Capitol is fully operational, and it is beautiful. That's all I'm going to tell you. It's beautiful. If you get an opportunity to get down there, you need to see what your tax dollars went into. It's a lot of money, but I think you'll be very pleased and recognize the fact of the work they did. Not only the work they did, but the stuff they discovered as they uncovered and brought back in replication and that type of thing. Took seven ounces of gold to coat the dome. Seven ounces of gold just to do that dome coating. So I think you'll like it. We're very proud of it and that type of thing. Did tend to county health, and I do want to report that the county health is monitoring what's going on nationwide with coronavirus. They're keeping an eye on it. The individual that's responsible for that monitoring is on the phone, in meetings, putting together kits for an out, bringing people up to date as to what's happened. I'm requested that public health be here at our next meeting on 17th to bring the Commissioners up to date. And of course, the good thing about that, since we're streaming, they'll be able to bring the community somewhat up to date in a fashion. So I think we'll be especially pleased to know that they're on top of it, the monitoring, and working with everybody at every level to make sure that we have all the right information so that we can do the right things rather than react and overact. So that was good to know. Commissioners, also, there's a couple of things. The Sweetwater Leadership Group that is headed up by individuals in this community, is about 17 of them, have requested to meet with us just as an informational basis. I will meet with their director tomorrow, and we're going to set up for them to come in on the 17th at 7:15 in the Castle Rock Room for them. And all of that group will come in and have questions and talk about county government, as well as they'll attend the first part of the meeting on 17th. But it's part of their involvement as leaders in the county, and they want to see government, hopefully, operating in great fashion. But the point being is, they will meet with us. I've checked with our county attorney. It does not require a special notice of a special meeting or anything, because there'll be no decisions made. It's just basically, we're there for those that want to be there to answer questions and just to provide them with what we're doing and that type of thing. So the invitation's open to all the Commissioners as well as that group, so I'll put the final touches together tomorrow morning. Also, we have, ahead of us is the deadline. I know at the last meeting, we approved to take out a half a page for the Rocket Miner for its progress edition, and of course, that first due date is coming up here shortly. We approved it to February 18th, of course, and they will, their due, please have your articles read by March 2nd if possible, which was.
Yes.
Move right along. So anyhow, I think they'll work with us since we paid for it, but I'd like to know if any Commissioner would like to head that up and what topic you'd like to see. Done. You want to do it? What topic would you like to do? Do you think we ought to run? In the past, it was, I can share this much. In the past, we were part of progress edition when we were building the Justice Center, pre and after, as well as some other stuff that was going on in the community. So that has happened. You know, folks on industry has happened, that type of thing. So what's your thoughts? I have one if nobody has one. Okay, what?
So I think we're talking about strategic planning. We're talking about the future of Sweetwater County, and then our tornay industry has announced multiple expansion projects as well. And so I think that it would be nice to do something looking forward to what our future has to hold. There's a couple of awesome partnerships and things like that that are going through our school district, looking at technical training, looking at industry development, and then our economic development, council moving under the county, looking at the county doing its first, you know, big strategic planning push, that kind of a thing. What's next for the community? You know, what, where do we have to look forward to?
Okay, and I think you were hitting on a few things where I was going to. Her deadline for all stories to be in is March 9th. Can you work with that deadline?
Yeah.
What's your thoughts, Commissioners? Any other idea besides what Commissioner Shanefield shared?
No, I think that's a, to me, that seems to be in the right direction.
So it's okay if the Commission, I will turn it over to Commissioner Shanefield. I know what the deadlines and that, that we have for that. There may not be much opportunity to have the Commission involved with the final.
I can send it out.
Send it out.
Just to make sure that there's no tweaks or any additions or whatever before you turn it down.
Sounds good.
I just want to.
All righty, very good. So I'll let you handle that and take care of that. Also, I hand it out to you a couple of handouts to boot. First one was, it's from Andrew C. Browning, and it's the Western States and Tribal Nations. And what it is, is the Western State and Tribal Nations in this handout, and I'll read it for the public, is a collaborative effort between multiple stakeholders to develop markets for natural gas resources from different basins which stretch across Utah, Colorado, Wyoming, New Mexico, and the sovereign tribal nations thereabouts. The Western State region has a unique advantage when compared to other conventional shale production areas, and that is an abundant and available pipeline export capacity for natural gas currently, which currently. for natural gas currently, which currently exists. Current partners include State of Utah, representing the governor's office, the Ute Indian Tribe, the State of Wyoming, represented by Wyoming Pipeline Authority, Western Colorado Counties of Garfield, Mesa, Moffett, State Baja, California, and Mexico, and the State of New Mexico. I also know that Wyoming, State of Wyoming is going to be a signature with this. I know that Lincoln County is going to get a presentation, their first meeting, probably their first meeting in April from this outfit. I have some more information to forward it. But, the question I would ask for you is, when I forward this information, if you give it back to me regarding, I will set up for this Mr. Browning to come and talk to us as a Commission, and see if it's a consortium we wish to be a part of. I got an email from Jim Willicks, out of Congress County, I believe, and they are members, moving forward with it. They see it as a real opportunity to network, to where, if we can get gas, natural gas prices to move ten or twenty cents on their present rate, through working with consortium, they really honestly feel it'd be revenue-wise for the State of Wyoming, as well as us, very good. So, if it's, I'll forward some stuff today to you. If I don't hear back from you, I'll just say by the end of this week, I will take that as a sign to move forward, and I will get Mr. Browning at one of our meetings. Is that okay? Alright, very good. And the second thing sheet I handed out for you is titled, "Overview of Colorado Water Issues." Oh, let's see how to start this. This is through the Rock Springs Green River Joint Powers Water Board. A while back, there was a joint meeting called with Rock Springs, Communities Protecting the Green, Joint Water Power Board membership, and other leadership. And we went into executive session. Now primarily, I talk about it now, because we move forward, we've come out action. Went under real estate, and what we were attempting to do is finding out what we need to do for the future of Sweetwater County for water. We know, that based on what we're seeing with the, in the Colorado River Users Association, the River Basin, we know that water, the same amount of water we had back in the 40s is the same amount we have today, if not less. And back then, it was serving three to four million people. Today, it's serving over forty million. Water's an issue in the Colorado River Basin. And of course, as we start talking about economic development, moving forward and grow, water becomes key. Of that water that flows down the green, Wyoming has rights to fourteen percent of it. No more than that, at this point in time. Out of that fourteen percent, that's where it's divvied out between doing the rights of water. There are pre, what we call pre-22 rights, which are senior rights, and there are post-22 rights, which are junior rights. The issue with the water becoming short, just quick of it, is what's called a curtailment. If the water flow, it leads fairly, reaches a certain point, the Colorado River Association, or the Bureau of, or the lead-up of the Colorado River, which is a Bureau, can do what's called a curtailment on the river, or a call on the river. And if there's a curtailment, what that indicates is that anybody with senior water rights are in pretty good shape, pre-22, they get their water first. Of the seven and a half million acre-feet of water going down the river, California has senior rights to four million acre-feet. So if we go into a curtailment, what that means is, anybody with junior water rights are the first ones, based in, most recent ones first, being removed, down to. So if someone had water rights in 1984, they would lose theirs before anybody had water rights in 1974. It keeps going down, across the board. And of course, our concern has always been, as we go through economic development in Sweetwater County, and we talk about Middle Baxter, Baxter in particular, we talk about the airport, we talk about Simplot, and we talk about industry, and that, out in the Churnet Patch, is where are we going to get more water? And just to share with you, Simplot, I believe, as well as Churnet Patch, are junior water right owners. They would be the first ones that would be expected to cut off water rights if there's a curtailment on the river, whatever the amount that is. But to what level? If it's thirty thousand acre-feet that's curtailed, that's a whole lot different than if there's eighty thousand. So, it just depends, there's formulas to work. So we started meeting, and that meeting was to say, was basically to determine, and see how it is, we could get more water for Sweetwater County, cities of Rock Springs, city Green River, Simplot, as well as industry. And our first inclination was, right off the top of our head, is we all know about the Fontanelle Project, where there's water available. So we thought, well, let's tie up some of it. So we worked with the Joint Water Board, they hired a consultant, who happened to be the former state engineer, when he retired, Pat Torrell. And he came to work with the mission for the Joint Water Board to see what was best, what's the best plan. Was it get this water from Fontanelle, or what would be better? Well, the overview that I have in front of me, that I'm reading, is basically the results of that. And it talks about revenues. So, to firm up water supplies, again, it was seek a contract, State of Wyoming for storage and Fontanelle, that was one of the options. Another option was to seek a temporary use agreement with existing pre-1922 rights, or a ready-to-serv agreement, which the Joint Powers Board could do. A ready-to-serv agreement, basically, it would mean that if Middle Baxter was all developed, shovel-ready, industry comes in, and it needed X amount of water, they could do a ready-to-serv agreement. And they feel comfortable that they could find enough water to serve that area. And of course, third option is seek a permanent change in place of existing water rights. In other words, basically go out and buy senior water rights. Do you think gold's valuable? Try and buy senior water rights. But, it's going on, it's happening. There are organizations that can afford those. That's how the East Slope of the Rockies over in the Denver area are surviving, is they're going out and they're buying ranches, or farms, and they're buying the water rights. And they're using water rights for development versus irrigation. So anyhow, that's been the whole process, and we continue to move forward. The end result is, is the Joint Water Board is responsible for its service area, Green River, Rock Springs, and Simplot, those are three major service areas. And that type of, I believe, Jamestown may be, the Lions, North Rock Springs, that area. But anyhow, whatever their service areas are, they will continue to work with that, and that type of thing. So, if there's an expansion, they will move into, they will move into those areas and look at them becoming service areas for them as well, even if it's Middle Baxter. But this whole issue about water is still on the table. Because we know that we're in twenty-two years of the worst drought in the Colorado River Basin. I just looked at the snow mass, just before the meeting, the Green River Basin, Upper Green River, which is above Flaming Gorge, all the way to the Green Rivers, what about a hundred and eleven percent of snow pack, right now. When you look at the Colorado area, the Gummison, and that area, where most of the water runs off into Lake Mead and Lake Powell, they're only, right now, at eighty-nine percent and ninety percent. Lake Mead and Lake Powell are the reservoirs that serve the southwest, and many places, and everything else, other reservoirs are basically storage areas to feed Powell and Lake Mead, so that they can meet the demand of the southwest. So there's a lot going on, I feel comfortable about sharing this, to let you know, because there have been executive sessions talking about real estate, and water is real estate, owning water is real estate, and that's what's happened. I want our citizens to know that the county's in the middle, working with the Joint Water Power Board in both cities, and to try and make sure that we have water for the future. There, we need to protect our industry, so as we move into what's called the drought contingency plans, which move into drought management plans, and drought management plans are basically to work with senior, it's going to be with more senior water owners, to voluntary, temporary, as well as compensate for their water rights, in case there is a curtailment, a plan for curtailment versus shutting off. And after legislative session is over, there'll be many of us in the community that will be involved to work on the drought management plan, with the State of Wyoming, to continue to look and make sure that we have water for the future. So, Commissioners, that's my report on the water at this point in time. That's what that one sheet is about, so if there's any questions, feel comfortable to ask, but we will continue moving forward with the best interest of Sweetwater County in mind. So those are those two things. Let me see what else I have. At this point in time, I have one more thing I'd like to say. I'd like to say thank you to the employees of Sweetwater County, for their services to the county and the work they do. That's not only in courthouses, that's in jails, that's in all the departments. And I want them to know that I, as the Commissioner, do appreciate their work and everything they're doing, the special accolades, and that includes the elected officials too. They're not employees, but they're included in that. So, so I hope I didn't miss anybody. But one group that's really out there busting their tails for us, is our road and bridge people with this winter storm that we've had, and what's going on. Also, our county fire department.
Absolutely.
Out there since Sunday, through late yesterday, working with the wreck that occurred on I-80, which I-80's still not open as a result of the winter and that type of thing. We in Sweetwater County are very fortunate to have the employees, and have the elected officials, and that includes Commissioners, as well as everybody, working for the citizens of this county. We're not always perfect, we'd like to think so, but we're not always perfect. And, but we will keep trying to do our best, but especially, I want to say thank you for the work everybody does. That concludes my report, any questions?
No.
Commissioner Shanefield, you're up next.
So, first and foremost, I'd like to extend my condolences to Commissioners and families during this very difficult time, when our paths are with you and your family. A lot of the conversations that I've had over the past two weeks have been around Six to Penny, but we're going to talk about that coming up. So, I've also had a number of meetings around Economic Development Council, and we are having some conversations around projects and moving forward, now that we're almost completely removed. Christina's working on the Assistance to Cool Communities funding, and potentially looking at partnering that with the Middle Baxter Road Project. This is a fifty-fifty grant, that would allow for some work to be done, and we're on a targeted industry plan project, which is directly from half what Christina shared with me. But it's pretty exciting, because we have some funding available to be able to work with that project, and continue to move it forward. I've also had some conversations with SEDC, as well as the Broadband Council, around broadband and connectivity, and doing some research. Kim McDonald's working for SEDC, doing some research through our communities, to see where our needs are, to see if any of those needs fit under our federal funding. There's a lot of federal funding available for this right now, and then we also have our state funds available. There's a lot of opportunity around connectivity, business corridors, and business development, and then individual residences, as well as rural healthcare, which, as we all know, especially through legislative session, has been brought up. It's a hot topic, and it's something that we need to be looking towards in the future, is rural healthcare for our very rural communities. I think living in Rock Springs and Green River, we feel pretty blessed, because we've got quite a bit right here. But when you look at Farsen and Long Saturday and Grandeur Bear Oil, we need to make sure that they have what they need, so that their citizens are taken care of. Coming up for SEDC, we are talking about when we're going to start strategic planning. I believe we're going to do a workshop to do so, and have some conversations around some goals, look at some future planning. And so, the projects that we're bringing in, and that we're working on, all have an end goal that meshes together, that fits with the county strategic planning, and also fits with the cities, to help everybody move forward together, instead of just one-off projects. As Roy had mentioned, we have gotten quite as far with the strategic planning as we'd like to, but we are still working on it. It is a big project. So, I think initially, in discussions with Commissioner Lloyd, we would like to talk about getting our department heads and our elected officials together, working with each of them for their one, five, and ten-year goals and plans, what they see as priorities for themselves, their departments, and the county as a whole. And then what their long-term vision is for their departments and the county as a whole. Talking about some strengths and some weaknesses, and where we can build and improve, where we can save money, where we need to put money, if we need to, investment-wise, and then some needs as well, so that we can ensure that we've got all of that combined in the strategic planning. The Dude Solutions is already working on some facility stuff, and so I think that that's going to be a huge asset moving forward as well. And we will look at the facilities and the needs of the county, the needs of the community moving forward with those facilities, once we get everything back. And then also some focus around the projects. I know that throughout, especially even our component units, we need to include them, and what, you know, what their needs are moving forward. If they have a project, or the county has a project, let's plan that out. Let's see what it looks like for the whole large scope of things, and really see where it fits within our community needs. As the other Commissioners have also mentioned, I've been kind of keeping tabs on the legislative session, and the bills that we need to keep an eye on. House Bill 159, which is the Ad Valorem, is one that's been a hot topic for everybody. We have been in communication with our legislature and our legislators, and letting them know what our community needs are, and what would be the best for Sweetwater County. Yes?
No, I'll wait till you're done, I just want to say something, when you're finished about 159.
And I have to say that I really truly appreciate working with the legislators that we have in Sweetwater County, and they've been very receptive, they've been open to conversations, they listen to feedback, and always do exactly what I request, but that's okay. But they're really, they've been great to work with, so I appreciate that. And then I also, I am a member of the Sweetwater County Mining and Manufacturing Partnership Executive Leadership Team, and we've really started working with school district number one, and in partnership with Western Wyoming Community College, around the career and technical education classes. And I think this is a really important thing, that as we talk about economic development in our communities, that we set our industry up for success, which means training our students to be valuable assets to those different industries. And so, they are looking at revitalizing some of the career and technical training programs through Rock Springs High School, Green River High School's on board as well, we just started with Rock Springs High School. They've been setting up meetings, actually have one this morning, that I wasn't able to make it, because I'm here. But, and working with, yeah, working with Simplot, and the Churnet Industries, and all of these other industries, to ensure that the training is happening, starting in our, in our junior highs and our high schools. So I think this is an awesome initiative. I'm really excited that we have all of our schools on board. And I also have to give a shout-out to Western Wyoming Community College. They have their, they started their first plant operation certificate program last, this last fall, and the class is just about ready to graduate. this last fall, and the class is just about ready to graduate. They're doing great things. We have two guys from Simplot that have been involved, so have been really involved in the planning of this and, you know, and getting feedback around the class and how it's working. They're really excited. They breeze through a lot of our training at Simplot, so that really shows me that the class is working. They're also doing some tours and getting ready for graduation with their certificates. So I think that it's really awesome that we have a community college that partners with the community needs and the industry and the community to meet those needs. And I'm looking forward to seeing kind of what we can come up with with school district number one in partnership with the college and moving forward.
Questions for commissioners? I have just a couple. First of all, the work with the schools to get the curriculum aligned for that, we can better be an asset to industry in that. It's going to be quite a culture shift. It even happens from when I was principal. The thinking was four-year college degree. I can remember standing before the, that graduation, and I was always glad to announce how many millions of dollars in scholarships to four-year institutions and that. But realistically, even in that shift in the last eight to 10 years to two-year programs in support of industry, we're finding out that our young people can go, you know, get this training, get trained for industry, two-year degrees, and go to work and make a lot more money immediately, you know, quicker than a four-year degree. Point being, the cultural shift has got to come in our schools, from the people within our schools, for them to start communicating these opportunities to our students so our local students can take advantage of it and stay here. So I commend you for that. I, you know, I'm glad to see it going forward. It's going to take a while to get that cultural change, but it will occur. And as we move forward and college becomes even more expensive, I can see people hitting the two-years and that type of thing, so that's good work. The other thing, House Bill 159, as we sit here right now, and right before the meeting, I don't know if everybody's familiar with House Bill 159. It's a deal with ad valorem taxes, monthly payments. Right now, our ad valorem taxes on mineral extractions as well as, it could be gravel, it could be uranium, you know, it's just total extraction. There's like about 17 elements between Trona, oil, gas, coal, whatever, throughout the state. Right now, when that product comes out of the ground, and our treasure's back there, so you can jump in anytime, Rob, and help me, we'll get, when that product comes out of the ground, it's, no taxes are paid, ad valorem taxes are paid on that product until 18 months down. This has been going on for years. Yeah. Now, here's the other aspect. One more thing to keep in mind through this whole conversation is 70% of ad valorem taxes go to schools. 30% is divvied up between specialty districts, counties, cities, and that. So we've been motoring along a lot of years. I think what brought this to the forefront was the bankruptcies in Campbell County last year. We've been having bankruptcies all along, but nothing as big as Campbell County experience that impacted the state. 10 years ago, they started talking about, we got to fix this 18 months of back pay. Now it's to the forefront today in our legislators as a result of what took place in Campbell County. Campbell County alone and ad valorem taxes, when those coal mines went bankrupt, just the school districts was nearly $150 to $170 million, I believe. So now, the legislator in House Bill 159 is trying not only to find a way to catch up these 18 months, but also they want to start those ad valorem taxes to be paid monthly. So what's come out of the House and moved to the Senate as of Friday, and I was down there and was a big part of all this, was a plan that is workable, not perfect, because you got to remember, you're dealing with raw ash, you're dealing with smaller, you're dealing with big, you're dealing with Trona, you're dealing with whatever, gold, whatever is going on in the state, coal, everything. But it came out to where? The starting date to start paying back taxes on mandatory is 2023. Now, they have some incentives set up. If you start sooner than that, you can get an incentive of 5% rebate if you start sooner. Also, for the coal companies that are just brought out, the bankruptcy coal companies, i.e. in Lincoln County, for example, they're just starting out. Well, when they started out, they also picked up this tax weight. They don't have the capital to jump right in and pay even starting in '23. So there's a clause in there that those companies, all these companies can negotiate locally with the county commissioners, with terms, with some great accountability and some great visibility. So there's some options all the way through. So this moved out of the House with those options as of third Friday to the Senate. As of this morning, before this meeting started, I got a text that there's an attempt by the Patrol Association and a senator coming out of the Trona County to change all those start dates from 2023 to 2021, 2020, which will kill the bill. Now, I hope our senators are wise enough to move forward and say, we don't want that amendment. Industry, and everybody sat at the table and came up what's moving to the Senate. My question becomes, that I'm struggling with, is you and I, we pay our taxes. We've given industry an 18-month right, and if they declare bankruptcy, they have an opportunity not to pay it. What's owed? So people, that's what's going on with House Bill 159. It's in the Senate, it's moving forward, and like I said, I've got it on my phone. I've been watching it closely. If my phone blinks, you see me look down, it's just the 159. It's not on the floor today, but we'll be emailing our senators as well as, it's going into revenue committee, which our senator, Senator Baldwin, on that committee. So it's important, not only do we have something in place to help industry come in, but we have something in place to help those that are struggling, plus help those that have three and four years. We know what's going on in the Trona Plant. Now, down in legislature, their eyeballs are huge, they're sparkling, but the Trona industry cannot carry the brunt of everything. These other people need to be expected to pay their back taxes, these other industries, in a fair manner, in a fair amount of time, and if they run into bankruptcy issues, we need the opportunity to negotiate with them so we can recover as much of that taxes as we can for everything. The school districts, when you think about 70%, they're backloaded. It's called the rainy day account, when they're short money for school, for education. So we don't hear a lot of conversation down at the legislature for 159 from education. They're backloaded. By statute, they're going to get it. It's sheer 30% that we need to worry about so that we can continue services. With a $2 million revenue drop for expected because of valuation this next year, plus other things that are coming aboard, people, we need to make sure that we not only help industry, but we don't overtax them, but yet we get back things aboard so we don't lose your money. So that's 159, that's what's happening this morning. The proposed amendment shows getting rid of that 2023 and moving it right to 2020, and if they do that, the bill will die, so I've already seen that. So just to share, that's what's going on. Thanks for your time.
No, thank you.
All right.
I agree with everything you said.
All right. So any questions for Commissioner Shanefield?
Would you, Commissioner Smith? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ever the teacher. That's excellent, excellent presentation on 159. That's good. Hard to get it out of the blood, huh?
Yeah.
But it's good to educate us, thank you. Also want to mention to Commissioner Johnson and his family condolences as well, and if you're watching while you're really thinking and praying about you. And, you know, Harry passed away from a heartbreaking disease, Alzheimer's, the effects of it, something that I deal with on a daily basis in the work that I do. And we just encourage everybody to, we have opportunities this summer, there's a couple of fundraisers, Walk to End Alzheimer's, we're also going to have a golf tournament. Love to see support for those two things this summer. June would be the walk. Last year, we, I had very little to do with it, but the walk itself raised quite a bit of money, way more than they expected to, and really did a great job throughout the state. And so bigger plans this year to try to raise more, and so whatever support you can give to that. It's the only top 10 disease or cause of death that does not have a cure, does not have a way to slow it down, does not have a treatment for it currently. Out of the top 10 here in the United States, top 10 things that people die of, there's no, nothing for it. And so that's sad and it's tough. So I'm sure many of you have been affected by that and your families, know people who have dealt with dementia and Alzheimer's, so just our thoughts go out to the Johnsons family for sure. Did also want to go backwards a little bit to a couple weeks ago, and we had a little huddle about the hospital and new frontier imaging, and explain the hospital's stance on that. I've had a number of emails and comments, been the liaison for the hospital about that and the, a little bit of confusion, I guess. So the equipment that was there, new frontier imaging, included a 3D mammography machine equipment, and that was something that the hospital had budgeted to purchase in new fashion. And so with this opportunity, they felt like, obviously it'd be really great to be able to get it for a lesser amount, kind of save us some money. And also, there was a fear that if another bidder won on that equipment, that it could move out of Sweetwater County. And there are some things that were literally offered there, and that would remove those services from Sweetwater County and move them to another city in the state or perhaps out of state altogether. So that is why the hospital was interested in those. They weren't going to buy the building, they were looking at assuming the lease that was already there for new frontier imaging. And so the words, things I heard, people are concerned, the library for six-penny money to do projects, if they have money to go out and, you know, purchase new frontier or this building or whatever it is. So just to help explain that a little bit, I wanted to help get that out there, that this was equipment that was already budgeted for, could get it at a lesser amount, and that not buying a building, not adding to the portfolio of buildings, but just assuming the lease and trying to keep services here in Sweetwater County. Fortunately, it looks as though that'd be the case. The winning bidder is out of, in state but out of, out of our city, but it looks as though they're going to continue to operate here, which is good news for us. So along with that, I commend the board and also Irene Richardson in their efforts to try to do a great job of running the hospital and would hope that, you know, someone would ask them or me and clarify and ask for support for their six-penny offering as well. So we do have a hospital board meeting tomorrow, so I'll look forward to attending that, and that's really all I have.
All right, thank you. You're welcome. Since Commissioner Johnson isn't here, I will do his quick public works read for everybody with the buildings. We are starting to go through the Dudes Solutions and priorities on capital replacement projects for the upcoming next budget year. Sweetwater County Courthouse boiler replacement project will start the advertisement period tomorrow. Bids are due Monday, March 30th, 2020. Engineering Department, we are currently working on a master schedule for all public work projects for the next construction season under road and bridge, snow, wind, snow, and more snow. This is a story for the road and bridge department in most places. The guardrail that was damaged two weeks ago is currently being repaired on the OCI road. That will conclude the report for Mr. Johnson. And again, I will reiterate, our condolences are with the Johnsons family, and I hope you'll all join us in remembering them and our prayers and stuff. With that, that will conclude commissioners' reports. I did want to step out of the norm for a moment. Ms. Inman, I have a question for you. We moved public comments early. I don't know if you noticed that on the agenda, and I was afraid you didn't and that type of thing, and I think it's only out of courtesy because last meeting, I told you that we'd have a public comment period and then we'd visit the IDOC again. So I think it's only right, and I'll step out. My belief is, under public comment, is there anything you were going to have to say to the commissioners?
Yes, I would.
Would you please stand and identify yourself? And please, we'll introduce this as part of public comment, out of courtesy, because I did change the agenda, but after this, our public comments are going to go earlier on the agenda.
Okay. Did it say Alvin was before you got here?
No, no.
Okay, okay. I didn't see.
There were other things, but not this.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Just in response to the last commissioner meeting, I don't know if you guys are aware, but we have iReg to register our vehicles online. These are all online services offered to our Sweetwater County residents. iTaxes pays and view your taxes online. iDOCs to search land records, and UNIS is an employee self-service app. If you have registered your vehicle, paid your taxes, obtained a marriage license, bought a home, car, or had any interaction with this courthouse since 2011, then you're benefiting from the tax dollars, and Miss Lane feels should be only the responsibility of the people who use it. All of these services mentioned require the same integrated software company Tyler Technologies, the company that our county commissioners had the commendable foresight to implement back in 2011. In December, I reached out to county, the county clerk. I know she had said that there wasn't very meaningful. I did, I did call her to find out why she initiated the fees and asked if she was willing to negotiate a lower price. When Miss Lane returned my call on December 6th, she told me that she would not consider lowering the fee because the cost of the IDOC upgrade was $750,000, and the commissioners had only given her $147,000. She said she intended to use the fees to cover the cost of the upgrade. Following that conversation, I sent clerk a formal request for records, receipts, and invoices pertaining to iDOCs. The clerk responded to my email, and I will give you a copy of all this. The clerk responded to my email stating that IDOC market upgrade costs $4,579 a month. It attached two invoices that totaled $122,321.30 showing payments to Tyler Technologies. I was able to obtain a copy of the movement of Tyler Technologies' contract through another agent and discover that the total cost was $3,355 as we learned last week. That included the $1,200 hosting fee and an upgrade charge of $2,155. The $750,000 Miss Lane initially used to justify the iDOC's fees was over the phone. Turned out to be the cost for US imaging to digitally reproduce all of the records for preservation and archive purposes. In the last commissioners' meeting, if you paid close attention to the county clerk's closing statements about US imaging, she said this had nothing to do with IDOC Market or DocuPro. It was a separate project to preserve our records, end quote. After clarifying that the projects had been getting mixed up and causing confusion, she explained that the $147,000 the commissioners put in her budget was used for archiving records to a hard drive that is unusable by the public. In order to use those records online, she said it would cost the county upwards of $650,000 to complete. The really big price tag somehow makes a full swing back to IDOC users being responsible for this project and justifying the fees. If you review the US imaging proposal, it explains in brief detail the three stages of preservation process and include a breakdown cost for each step of the process. If you notice all five pages, there is no additional cost for US imaging to format and export images to Tyler Technologies at the completion of the third stage. US imaging and Tyler Technologies are partners, and formatting is compatible with Document Pro that is located in the county clerk's office. According to Miss Lane, there was 1,281 IDOC users before the update. If she wants to recoup the cost of the annual fee, then charges the $2.62 per year that it actually costs. I am not sure why the fee was not assigned to IDOC, or was only assigned to IDOC Market, but not iTax, iReg, UNIS, or the bill pay options that are still free to use on our county website. All of them cost the same, which I think is that you guys all have a copy of the contract. All of them cost the same, which I think I sent you guys all a copy of the contract, they all cost the same to do every month, every year. If Ms. Lane truly believes that the taxpayers should be financially responsible for providing a convenience to the public, then why didn't she set the same fees for the other services? Ms. Lane stated that she wanted to be a good steward to our hard-earned money, therefore I think she needs to validate the importance of the non-obligatory Document Pro software with the personal buy-in at $1,500 per year to recapture the $122,321 annual fees that Tyler Technologies charged for her upgrade. After all, the services are not, are a convenience, and only for a few, and are not required by law to be provided to the county clerk's office. There was, something said about, there being confusion about these costs, but there's another, and I have the email where she said it was that much, she told one of the senators, it will take quite a few years to pay for the upgrade and maintenance fees. So, I don't think there was any mistake about what we were told about the cost. I mean, I don't think anybody thought I was gonna actually get a hold of the contract and be able to see it's $3,355. It was also stated, I don't remember who said it in the last meeting, that the county officials, county employees do not have access to iDocs? They do, there's any of them. And I have the email between Tyler Technologies and the county clerk discussing who they are and what access they have. I need to drink water, but, sorry. So, and the Tyler Technologies, you know, between the county clerk and them, there's two employees that do not have an admin access, although these emails will say otherwise, you can look at and see, they did not give the records clerk's access, to admin access. So, when I first asked who all had it, she did say that they had iDoc Market as part, but not as part of their job, and then I asked if it was admin access, and the response on that email was yes, the clerks, record clerks have admin access to iDoc Marketplace in order to run reports for public records requests. So, I actually talked to Tyler Technologies, and they give the county clerk's records office non-admin access, because in order to get the software, and you guys can call them up if you need to talk to them, to give them access on their own computers is $55,000 a year, because they have to license each computer. So, there is a workstation with Document Pro, and then they use iDoc Market, because it's 1,200, and then, you know, plus the whatever fees, so $3,355 a year. So, it's cheaper to use iDoc Market in the office than putting the $55,000 per license, which, yeah, that's saving money, however. He said it is exactly the same data, it goes over, and he explained how that worked, and he explained why Tyler Technologies gave a backdoor to counties, and this is not just our county, this is to all counties. So, in that, I mean, that in itself, why are we paying extra for something our county needs? But, also, if we're not paying, if we're paying fees, then why aren't the other services? Why are we being targeted as real estate, or lenders, or, you know, title companies? Why are we being targeted to charge the fee while the rest of the public is, they're benefiting off of the paying your registration online, paying your taxes online, and these are all free online services to the community that cost a yearly maintenance fee. So, I gave you a copy of everything, and I numbered it, if you would like to go through and read any of it, or have it, I only did one copy, I don't have anybody to charge fees for this, so, I was trying to myself, so.
All right.
Anyways, in very back there, I did, now, Tyler Technologies, talked to him about an hour and a half on the phone, and then he said, I asked him to put some of that in writing, so they could actually provide it, and he said, "I'd better call the county first." And he was told not to give me any more information, but I think it was already, I mean, it was done, he'd already answered everything, so.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, everything.
Was there, I've gotta ask this question, was there anybody else that was gonna speak regarding?
I have no idea.
Yes, okay, I'll give you an opportunity, because I did change the agenda, let me explain. One of the reasons I changed the agenda to move county citizens' concerns earlier on the agenda, is because a lot of times it came after reports, like did today, and we have people sitting around, people needing to get to work, and so I just said, "We're gonna move it to the beginning." I knew we might run into this today, so I'm gonna be a little flexible today and allow comments along this line, but after this meeting today for the public, our county commissioner, our county citizens' concerns will follow immediately after we do the budget amendments, because our budget amendments are advertised for 8:30 every meeting, so if we have any budget amendments, then it'll be county citizens' concern, but if we have no budget amendments, then it'll be right after that, which will be ahead of the commissioner report. So, we can hear the county concerns, and then people that need to get to work can get right to work on our opposite side, okay?
Okay.
All right, so, anything more, Michelle?
The only thing I can say is, there was a comment made about if there's anybody besides realtors, I'm not speaking for the two other county board of realtors, however, my business is a photographer, other than being a realtor, is also in that, they are lenders, appraisers, title companies, inspectors, I mean, you name it, they make up a word group, it's not just realtors.
So, my question, just shifting through, is trying to listen carefully and really drill down, your concern primarily is the fees?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, that's all I need to do.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anybody else who'd like to speak on this?
I'm Jeremy, so.
Good morning.
Just welcome.
Thanks.
I'm probably not as well-spoken and as well-prepared as you are, but what I wanted to talk to you guys about was something that I heard at the tail end of the presentation. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Lane and Mr. DeLong for presenting that, that was very I believe very firmly in the system of representative government. When we elect the commissioners, we elect you to represent our interests, and so when you make rules, and laws, and establish fees, it's with our backing, there's a process that goes forward where we have the opportunity to express our concerns. You guys have done a very good job of listening to us, it's been very impressive from that standpoint. But, there was something said at the end of the presentation about, if people are interested in this, then they'll pay a fee, it's sort of like a fee to show interest, but my concern as a citizen of Sweetwater County is that I show interest in this when you guys cast your vote. When you guys instituted iDocs in 2011, that was my interest, that was everyone in this county's interest. There was an opportunity then for citizens to come forward and say, "I don't want my tax dollars represented in this way." And nobody did, nobody had a problem with it. And so, there's a lot of people in the county that hear these exorbitant fees, $750,000, wow, that, you know, why should I be, my money be going to pay for a service that only realtors use, because realtors make a lot of money, or landmen use? But, this is a service that's provided for everyone in this county. It's the same thing as Middle Baxter Road, I mean, Sweeney Ranch, the employees of Simplot, they're the ones that benefit from Middle Baxter Road. I know, I used to haul out to Simplot for 10 years. It's something that most people don't use, Middle Baxter Road. There was a gentleman here talking about Claireview needing new roads. We're a county, we work together, there's a reason that we have great wrestling programs in Sweetwater County, it's because the members of this county are, well, we're tough people, and we work together. And, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with this name or not, I wrote it down, I'll see if I can find it, Louisa Ann Swain. So, she's, she was the first woman to cast a vote in a general election, she casted in the state of Wyoming. That's the type of people that live in Wyoming, and that's the type of people that live in Sweetwater County. There was something mentioned about, well, 14 other counties do it, and there's no problems. All these other states do it, and there's no problem. By the time this Swain cast her vote, every other state in the United States thought that women had no right to vote. Just because something is in place by multiple counties, multiple states, doesn't mean it's right. I grew up in Kansas, I moved here in 99, Brown versus the Board of Education, great example. Until that point, when the Supreme Court ruled on Brown versus Board of Education, it was legal to segregate schools. Didn't make it right, but every state had legal segregation. And so, just because four or five counties have not stood up to illegal fees, doesn't make it right. And I do think they're wrong, because you're essentially charging a fee for something my tax dollars have already paid for, and so that is the issue. I know that the state has a right to recoup costs, but trying to make an exorbitant amount of money on something that is public records, and it is public records, you can get certified copies from Tyler Technologies. If it's not public records, what are our title companies searching? When they go online and they look at this stuff, if they're not searching public records, what are they guaranteeing when they guarantee that my title's free and clear? And they're just using Tyler Technologies, so, it's iDocs. And so, I did care about this before the fee was put in, and I cared about it by electing you guys, and you guys established this stuff, and that's the way representative government is supposed to work. And I did vote for you too. So, you know, I think that this really needs to be examined, if the public had been given the 45-day opportunity to speak about these fees, this might be different. So, I just would hope that you would consider to representatives, a lot of people here, and we're representative government, and I hope you take our best interests in the heart of it.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Thank you. Don't ever sell yourself short on talking, you did a very good job. You gotta be a graduate, you said you grew up in Kansas, so I can't take credit for you as a graduate of Rockford County. All right, thank you. Anything else, anybody else? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, please state your name and who you're with.
Regina Hildebrandt, I am a realtor, I'm representing myself. I use iDocs a lot, and prior to the fee, I used it all the time, and since the fee, I have not used it at all. I can't personally afford $1,500 a year, you know, people say realtors make a lot of money, I don't think that, I don't think that's a basis to charge somebody for how much they make, you know? It is paid by our taxes, I do use it a lot, it benefits my business, because my business is to protect the public, that, I have a code of ethics that I adhere to, and my first concern is my clients. And not having access to iDocs hurts my business, so I really wish you would consider this that's already in place to either remove it or make the fee reasonable.
Please.
$5,000 is not reasonable.
Thank you very much, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else? This the last time you'll be able to come this late for a public conference? Yes, Mr. Coons, please identify yourself one more time.
Dallas Coons.
Yes, Mr. Coons.
I just wanted to agree with you about the county road and bridge. I live out of Jamestown, we have a bridge out there that every spring have to patch it up. I called him, it was done within an hour.
Thank you, we'll pass that along.
Same way with Snow removal, they are Johnny on the spot, I cannot say enough good.
It's been a tough year for snow removal, but I have to agree with you, and I thank you for your comments, I really do.
One other thing, Commissioner Lloyd, he made the comment of what great kids the wrestlers are, and I agree with it, we've got some other great kids that very seldom get really recognized. That's the kids, Green River, Rod Springs, head up the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
Absolutely.
And also, Blood Drive.
Good.
It's a good, healthy competition between the two schools.
It is, very good, thank you.
I think they deserve some.
Thank you. And I would like to comment, I think you're leading into something that's even greater than that, is our kids in this county are the foundation of the future of this county.
Exactly.
And, what, I would like to think what they have, which I hope is pretty good as a result of what their fathers and grandfathers presented for them ahead, so, my job, huh?
And principal.
Well, thank you. But, I honestly believe what we're talking about from this point on is, these kids have gotta carry that torch and continue to make this county good for everybody. So, the kids are the foundation of the greatness of Sweetwater County, thank you.
The ones you hear about most are the ones who get control.
You know, choices, choices.
That's nature.
That's why we're here, they learn from them, thank you. Okay, anything else? One more time, anything else? At this time, comments are closed. Commissioners, we are still on schedule, do you want a break, or would you like to deal with iDocs first? Five minutes? All right, we'll take a break for five minutes, and we'll come back with our regular agenda. We call this meeting back to order, and of course, our first item on the agenda is the Tab D, the iDoc marketplace. I put that on there, and before we move forward too much further, I've got a couple questions for our attorney, and then I'll ask for commissioners' comments and that type of thing, but, hold on that thought for a second, but anyhow. Mr. DeLeon, legally, you're okay? Illegal, any legal aspects?
You know, Mr. Chairman, the only, the only, I guess, point of clarification that I think will be helpful as the interested parties continue to discuss, discuss the matter is that, there's a lot of discussion about a tax was already paid versus fee, and I think that, but I also heard some, there were some comments in terms of acknowledging the defraying, that defraying is a legitimate governmental process. And so, I think, I think it's helpful to, as the policies are discussed and dealt with, to recognize that fees are not a tax, that's not an additional tax, and so, hopefully that, that idea of being double taxed can be, can be taken off the table, and the issues in terms of discussing the policies and what are the appropriate amounts isn't, that that, that confusion doesn't take away from the fruitful discussion that will be taking place.
All right, so, my question then to you is, defraying costs is perfectly legit.
Yes, correct.
And that falls under recapturing, so, fees being charged, which would be defrayed costs. Now, defrayed costs not only would possibly include the purchase of programs and, you know, the services, but they could also include people's time to deal with services? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The, so, when you talk about the idea of recapture, it's a little bit more limited in scope. The idea of defraying is, it has a little bit of a broader connotation, and so, so, defraying cost isn't quite as, I guess, exact as it is sort of being discussed. In other words, the, it doesn't have to be dollar for dollar per se, when you're talking about defraying cost. And in addition to, it just has to be related to the purpose being discussed, not dollar for dollar. The other component is, yes, it can include other matters, other considerations beyond just the dollars that are identified, including in, you know, if you're looking at, you know, all the discussions that are taking place, all the work that's being done in the process are all relevant considerations.
So, the next question I have is, policy? Have you operated within our policy through this whole process? Has best you?
Yeah, you know, so, again, I think that those, those discussions have been pretty narrow in terms of public documents, and that this is not a, this isn't addressing a right per se, which is when you're dealing with WAPA, and it's also law and administrative procedure, and the public records, it's not a public record. So, those have been, those ideas have been vetted and continue to be vetted as, as the process moves forward, so we'll, we'll continue to keep, keep you updated, Miss Lane updated as well.
Fellow commissioners, any questions regarding what we've heard? Commissioner Shanfield? No? Commissioner Smith?
Nope.
Mr. Boyd?
I'd already had the opportunity to ask Attorney DeLeon some questions, and I feel like he answered those previously.
Did he? Okay, very good. Okay, so then, what we've come down to is, whether we possibly look at some recommendations, and I know we, as commissioners, have all thought of some, and we even talked about some last time, but before we go there, I would like to go to our clerk and see if she has a recommendation for us that might work. So, Ms. Lane, if you would mind, please.
We give--
Yes, that's okay, we'll wait.
Thank you, Chairman Lindley, and commissioners. As you know, when all this rolled out back in November, it was out of our hands when it happened. Found out through the process that even though technically, you know, that process doesn't apply the 45 days, but I wanted to do that, it was scheduled and planned to do that, and it was taken out of our hands, but, so then it was like trying to dig out of a hole. I did get some of the numbers wrong at the beginning, and then through all of this research and finding out, I was, had phone call, I was going to get the records together before I could have even a meeting, you know, became on Facebook, and so, you know, so then that just added to all the different things that, you know, were going on, and we were checking out to make sure it followed correctly, because I was worried about that. I don't want to be that person. I don't want to do things incorrectly. I pride myself on looking at everything that's going on, and then, once the attorney stuff got involved, and I really couldn't say anything, so everything just went about on its own. So, after listening to everybody, and I'm still not sure, you know, with the attorney process, but I would like to respectfully recommend that I have an opportunity to meet with the Board of Realtors President, or with Vice President, to see where we can go with this. It truly is the agency that I have, I've had three phone calls about this, and all three were Realtors, and I'm more than happy to meet with them and see where we can go from there, to discuss the fees and look at everything that's happened.
So, if I understand correctly, you make the recommendation to us that we support you in meeting with members of the Realtors Association, and we know they have a board.
And the board wrote a letter.
Board wrote a letter, so I think you need to include them. If that's the recommendation, we choose to accept, as well as their, don't they have a chair as well? Leadership?
Yes.
Not just the board. You got the board, and then you got the chair. Am I wrong or right?
Can I speak to that, because I'm--
Would you please?
I'm, my name is Emily Locas, I'm the Vice President. The President is at Strategic Planning for the state right now, and then we have a President -elect who is also not here. So, that's kind of our structure, and then we have general membership, which includes Realtors, affiliates, insurance agents--
Do you have a chairman of the board?
No.
We have a President, Vice President, and President-elect.
All right, so you have, you have leadership that you have an opportunity, you can visit with as well as whatever, that you could sit down and address--
As long as, I would believe, as long as they're not involved with legal matters, things I can't speak--
What's your thoughts?
Where there's legal issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that the, you know, meeting to discuss, you know, policy issues is, is perfectly legitimate. I don't see any issues there. Obviously, you know, discussing the legal framework, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't expect that to be part of the discussion.
Okay.
I think discussing the fees and the amounts--
Since, yeah.
Before, I think, I think that's appropriate for--
Excuse me, may I say something?
Sure.
I agree with Chris Cindy, their meeting with everybody, but it's not just Realtors, it affects our whole community. I'm not a Realtor.
I'm not either.
Yeah, so, I mean, your door's always been open, too many of those people--
Yes.
--to talk about the fees and this type of thing, so, I'm not gonna tell you what that makeup should be, but your recommendation is--
To start there.
To start there, start meeting with individuals, your door's open, so that, that would be a recommendation coming out of your office.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we have met with her and spoken to her with our general leadership, and it hasn't been fruitful, so I don't think that's gonna get us anywhere.
Well, thank you. Well, I allowed the floor to be spoke, so now, I'll take that back, and it's now the commission, so. Commissioners, there are some options, and we heard one, which keeps the, the issue in the clerk's office, which, and out of, we're at this point in time. The other option we have is, is I know as a commission, we can take the program over and hire somebody to do it, or leave the program, again, with Ms. Lane, and she meets with people, has a conversation about the fees, and at some point in time comes back and talks to us about it. Those are two, two or three recommendations. I don't know, any other commissioners think of anything? Go ahead.
So, in discussion with county attorney's office, and then, in the past three weeks specifically, I've been approached by far more real estate agents who are, some of them are members of the Board of Realtors, who have come up to me in odd places, in child stands, and events, and things, and they're very, very upset. So, I have to say that they're very upset that this is even coming forward to us. I've had probably three times as many come to me outside of public meetings that we, than we've had in these public meetings, stating that they don't agree with it, that they are a part of the Realtors Association, that they have concerns, that they don't feel, they feel like the fees are not an issue. I've actually spoken with a title company who has stated the same thing. And so, I feel like sometimes coming to public meetings is, it's scary, and people don't want to associate themselves with things that they don't feel are correct. And I feel that we should give those, those people the opportunity to step forward and have some individual conversations. Because all of the conversations that have been brought up have been individual conversations with me. A lot of these people are people that I've worked with or known throughout the community, just premieres of living here. And I think that when, when we have stuff coming forward, it needs to be dealt with in a civilized manner, not, I mean, Cindy hasn't even had the opportunity really to respond to a lot of the comments that have been made here. Some of this stuff, I mean, there's conflicting stories coming from all different sides, and that's not helpful to anybody. It's not getting anyone any closer. Cindy has been unable to speak on a lot of these things, not only because it's a county commissioner meeting, but also because there's been a legal aspect of it. So, I feel like we really need to encourage Cindy to get out and into the community, have the conversations, document those conversations, and then allow the fees to take the time to have an impact or not have an impact. It's been three months, and we haven't seen how many people have signed up, and I think that's, that's a short period of time, and whether it has an impact or not. I mean, if you don't want to pay your $1,500, pay your monthly fee until we can get some, you know, some underlying numbers and some data and things to actually really truly sort the issue out. It did roll out outside of her hands without public hearing, and we have fielded comments this whole time, but really haven't had a lot of opportunity to have action. So, I truly believe that allowing Cindy to do her job as an elected official, and then having the opportunity for her to meet with those within the Realtors Association, and individuals that may be associated with that, but that aren't in agreeance with that, and then come back with some, some data. She's in an elected position for a reason, she was elected by our community, we have to allow her to do her job as well.
And that's, and that's her recommendation to us, to allow her to do that?
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing, to address the fees, so. All right, commissioners-- All right, Commissioners, other comments?
I would, I totally agree. I think that the process needs to work itself out. It's unfortunate the way that it did happen. A lot of it was taken out of Cindy's hand, which is unfortunate and left it off to a very bad start apparently. But yeah, let's try to find a way to fix it. I'm a compromise guy and there's always a happy meeting somewhere and so I hope that our parties can work towards that and, you know, let's try to get it accomplished, so. But no, I have no desire for the commission to take over.
Well, it's an option, I'm telling you, you got a lot of good information. Not a good one. Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, I think, I think I struggled with this situation a little bit for a couple of reasons. You know, first of all, I do see myself as a representative of the community and the constituents and of voters up here and are members of our community and also because I believe, you know, we have to, with the stores and the tax money. But I also believe that our elected officials were elected for a reason and I also believe we should have faith in our, in the people we hired to run our departments, so I don't believe in micromanaging or going over what they're doing either. So stylistically on this, I'm not usually a waffler, I guess, or I'm not usually someone that rides the fence, but this is a position where I've kind of struggled with because it kind of sits in between two of my belief systems and how I lead and how I think we should run things. I definitely don't want the baton. I would prefer that we find and let Cindy find some resolution in this and I have faith in Cindy that can find some resolution. As we go through this process, a couple of things in my mind that come up, I like to maybe have some timeframes of, you know, I know legally it was the 45 day, you know, this is when we're gonna start the process, but I like a definite, this is when we're starting the process and this is when the process will end. So there is a timeframe, so we know when there could be work towards resolution. I just would expect professionalism from everyone involved, from all sides. I know that, and I'll be honest, I can't tell people this, stay off social media on this subject, it only makes things worse. I know it's a forum, but it only exacerbates the situation. I'm not trying to take people's personal freedoms away by any means, but when we're in a conflictual situation like this, I think it just, it creates all kinds of zaniness. But also, we need to be open to the process and I know that, as Mr. President said, you know, we've already met and it was really, it wasn't fruitful, it was, now that we're going with fresh and new, let's see if we can make it fruitful. And that's where I'd like to see it go. And I think we all have to work together because I think sometimes when we get in these situations, they also, unfortunately, sometimes become personal and we have to be mindful and professional so we stay away from that. And knowing many of the people that sit out there in the room representing the Realtors, some very well, more than others, I have a lot of respect for those people in that room. I want to know of them and I know they can be mindful in presentations and I think the people that are presenting have that ability too, but I also know that of misunderstanding. So I think if we go into this with some tie dates and concepts that we're gonna stay professional, I think, I think we could come to a better resolution at this point and I would like to see us go in that direction.
Anybody else? That's it, go ahead.
I want to add on to what Commissioner Lloyd said in that the fees are where they're at, we are where we are at. So going back and saying, well, you know, Cindy said this and Cindy said that, that's not gonna help us move forward. So I would encourage everyone to look at what we can do to work together moving forward instead of being concerned. Yes, it rolled out not the way that everybody wanted. Yes, the fees are not what you want. So let's work together and come up with a resolution in the future instead of going back to anything that may have or may not have happened. Because it's not gonna be helpful. And we want to move forward and we want this to be resolved, which does not include bringing up past names.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just kind of, sorry, piggybacking on what Lauren said is, as a commissioner, I want resolution in this situation and that's because we have a lot of pressing issues within this community and I want us to be able to move forward so we can work as a community, but also I just think it's time that we do find a resolution and move forward. So I think we have to come to that goal together and it has to be together, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going last is always nice, that's why the chair doesn't speak first, other than maybe a little guidance once in a while. Yeah, everything that was said, I agree with. One thing I'd like to say is, is recapture fees even over and above our taxes, our reality. We, because of statutes, cannot just add additional taxes to run government and to take care of government. We do have to be allowed to implement programs and impose fair recapture type fees. And through this whole issue, the comment team that kept coming back to me was the fees, the amount of fees and primarily the yearly fee, if I'm not mistaken. I think because of some notification legalese, I'll just say that, people became quiet, especially in our end, and that's the direction we take. But I think the door is open now at the bequest of your elected clerk to be allowed to sit down and, sit down and bring together and look at the fees and see what can be done. And I think that's what, overall, the last month and a half, that's what I think I've been hearing people ask for. And I think our clerk, with all the listening that's taken place and that type of thing and what you've had to say especially, has, is open to that and embraced. And basically what I'm hearing is, all right, let's start again, let's sit down, let's take a look at it and then bring back a fee schedule that is agreeable. Did anybody hear anything different, Commissioners? No, I do not. And again, too, do you like what I'm saying or what I'm doing? Three years, you get to check the box, you know? And I don't mean to throw that out, but that's the reality of it is and I'm not looking to get, I'm telling you right now, I'm not doing anything to get re-elected, I'm just trying to do the right job. I don't, that's your call, you live with that. But where we're at is our clerk the same hand, let's start over. And I think anything anybody said here and what you have to say, it's right. You're all right. Everybody's. But now we got a chance, you do. We've opened the doors of commission to stay out of it because of a recommendation made by their clerk and I would encourage that we follow it. Does anybody have a problem? With that, I will say we'll move on with our agenda for the rest of the day and direct our clerk to begin her process to start visiting and meeting and coming back. You okay with that, John? Okay, very good. Thank you for being here. For those of you, we appreciate it, it's been a fun venture and I look forward to more. Thank you. Have a good day. Drive safe on it. There's other stuff we're gonna talk about. Your state, we're all state for the next year. With this, I'll call the chairman back to order and let's move on with our agenda and the first, next item up, tab D, or I'm sorry, tab E is renewal of liquor license and at this point, Ms. Lane, I'll turn the floor with you.
Good morning again, thank you, Chairman Lindley and Board. Today we bring to you the annual renewal of the county liquor licenses and I've been asked to read them and then Chairman Lindley will take those. So we've already published them in the newspaper like we are required to do and I'm just gonna read the different sections. So county retail liquor license requests were LT Enterprises doing business as White Mountain Mining, Buckboard Marina at Flaming Gorge LLC doing business as Buckboard Marina, Wes's LLC doing business as Eaton Saloon, The Hub LLC doing business as Mustang Travel Stop, Barley Mercantile LLC doing business as Point Bar, LaLene A. Miller doing business as Mitch's, Little America Hotels and Resorts doing business as Little America, Joeetta LLC doing business as The Travel Camp, Fast Stop 1134 Inc. doing business as Cool Jacks and K R Distributing doing business as Kelly's Hitching Post. And then we have under the county restaurant liquor license, Purple Sage Ventures LLC doing business as The Log Inn. And then the county retail malt beverage permits are for Roger D. Barley doing business as Point Merck, Mustang Travel Stop LLC doing business as Mustang Travel Stop, Eaton Investments Inc. doing business as Farson Feet Store, Little America Corporation doing business as Little America and Crossroads Travel Plaza LLC doing business as Crossroads Travel Plaza. And then last, we have the county limited retail liquor licenses, that is Rolling Green Country Club Inc. doing business as Rolling Green Country Club. And that's the licenses you have for?
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Okay, we'll start with the first group, the county retail liquor license and we will open the floor for a public hearing for retail liquor license, county retail liquor license. They are LT Enterprise doing business as White Mountain Mining Company, Buckboard Marina doing business as Buckboard Marina, Wes's LLC doing business as Eaton Saloon, The Hub LLC doing business as Mustang Travel Stop, Barley Mercantile LLC doing business as Point Bar, LaLaine A. Miller doing business as Mitch's, Little America Hotels and Resorts Incorporated doing business as Little America Hotels and Resorts Incorporated, Joeetta LLC doing business as The Travel Camp, Fast Stop 1134 Inc. doing business as Cool Jacks, K R Distributing doing business as Kelly's Hitching Post. I'll open the floor for public comment regarding those county retail liquor license. Any comment? Any comment? Hearing closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chairman Lindley?
Yes.
I would move that we would remove the retail liquor licenses, retail malt beverage permits, restaurant liquor licenses.
Oh, excuse me, we can do one at a time. Because we have to have a public hearing for all the others.
So we'll just start with the county retail liquor license?
Yes, thank you. I should have said point order. So so moved by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the county retail liquor license as mentioned. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We now open a public hearing for county restaurant liquor license, that being Purple Sage Ventures LLC doing business as Log Inn. Floor is now open for public comment. Public comment. Floor is closed. Commissioners, your pleasure.
I'd so move that we approve the county restaurant liquor license.
Okay, we have motion to approve county restaurant liquor license as presented, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield. Discussion Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, we'll open now a hearing for the county retail malt beverage permit, Roger D. Barley doing business as Point Merck, Mustang Travel Stop LLC doing business as Mustang Travel Stop LLC, Eaton Investments Incorporated doing business as Farson Feet Store, Little America Corporation doing business as Little America Corporation, Crossroads Travel Plaza LLC doing business as Crossroads Travel Plaza LLC. Public hearing is now open?
Good morning, Board.
Yes.
I forgot to mention that the period of the license is April 10th, 2020 through April 9th, 2021, just so they're.
Is that for all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Apologize, because it's for a year.
Okay, so do we have to go back to each one or can we just?
I, I think that you have to go back.
I do too. Okay, let's, let me, let's finish this one. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the county retail malt, do we have the public hearing? Yeah, we did, thank you. I just got mixed up a little.
Sorry, me too.
Nope, that's all right, point order was recognized. Okay, for county retail malt beverages, public hearing being closed and again, these permits are for the period of April 10th, 2020 through April 9th, 2021. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion to approve the county retail malt beverage permits for the period of April 10th, 2020 through April 9th, 2021.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and let's go back to county retail liquor license. Again, who made the motion?
I did, so I'd like to amend my motion.
To include the?
Include the date period of April 10th, 2020 through April 9th, 2021.
Okay, we have amended that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, let's go to restaurant liquor license and again, who made the motion?
I would like to amend that with the, to approve the county restaurant liquor licenses for the period of April 10th, 2020 through the period, through April 9th, 2021.
Okay, is there a second? Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say motion opposed, motion carries. John, did we do that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, going to our last one, it's the county limited retail liquor license. We'll open the public hearing for Rolling Green Country Club Incorporated doing business as Rolling Green Country Club. Floor is open, public hearing? Comment? Again, comments? Public hearing's closed, Commissioners, your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Schoenfield.
I'll make a motion to approve the county limited retail liquor license for the period of April 10th, 2020 through April 9th, 2021.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you very much, I think that takes care of that.
Do you have anything to ask for that?
Thank you for your help. All right, we'll move on to now, we have a approval of the fiscal year 2020 Drug Enforcement Administration Letter Agreement and related certifications, Ms. Marshall and Mr. Grossman. Good morning.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we're gonna move on from liquor licenses and IDOC dates to domestic cannabis. So Sweetwater County was awarded $50,000 in federal funding from the Drug Enforcement Administration to participate in the domestic cannabis eradication suppression program. This funding must be expended by September 30th, 2020. So the purpose of this grant funding is to exclusively target drug trafficking organizations involved in illicit cannabis cultivation. In case you didn't know, marijuana is the only major drug of abuse grown in the United States. So since October 2017, the Sheriff's Office has actually been involved in many types of criminal interdictions. I've provided this in your packet, but as an example, they've seized over 1,550 pounds of bulked or processed marijuana, currency $52,000 has been seized, arrests 73 and as far as indoor cultivation seizures, 86 bulked processed marijuana, four arrests and four weapons. So this grant award will be used to pay for operational expenses primarily focusing on highway interdictions, human intelligence gathering, the initial collection of documentary evidence and other activities in coordination with our state and federal partners. So with an award of $50,000, it can be spent on overtime, training and equipment, there's, it could all go towards one area, but it's being proposed for all three. Just so you know, the Department of Justice cannot cover the workers' compensation, Social Security, Medicare and retirement costs. That equates to 26.6%. So in terms of the $50,000, if all of it were spent on overtime, it would cost the Sheriff's Office $13,300. They are not planning to do that and the sheriff has confirmed he would not need a budget amendment, it could be absorbed. budget amendment, it could be absorbed. Along with this project, which is the first time we're getting this federal money, the Sheriff's Office would like to participate in asset forfeitures and equitable sharing program to receive back a portion of the proceeds, and that is the next agenda item. So perhaps the Sheriff has some more to talk about than this cannabis.
Morning Sheriff, welcome.
And this is a, so we can have additional resources out there, this is a supplement to what we are already doing. It's difficult within the state system to deal with this for many aspects, which I agree with also, but I believe that the federal partnerships need our data, and that's where this came from, that we should take advantage of the money that's out there.
Very good. Questions, Commissioners? Okay, with that, I got one question. Would this grant be available in Colorado? So if it's not, shouldn't we get more?
This is the first year we'll put in for it, and next year is, from what I understand, there's a possibility of more.
More next year, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, we are getting half of what the original request was, so this will be a trial of years.
Wonderful. All right, well, good job, good job. Okay, Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we approve and authorize the chairman to sign the fiscal year 2020 Drug Enforcement Administration Letter Agreement and related certifications, certificates. And Louie?
Thank you. We got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any other discussion?
We all have our blueprints, we should be proud.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Louie? Okay, let's move on to the next one, Tab G, which is Sheriff's Office to participate in the federal asset forfeiture and equitable sharing programs. And again, Ms. Marshall and Sheriff Grossnickel, thank you.
Okay, and just to be clear, there's no document to sign on this item, we just want to be transparent and clear and put in public record what the Sheriff's Office is proposing. So they are requesting permission to participate in the asset forfeiture and equitable sharing programs, which could be impacted because of the activities you just proved tied to domestic cannabis eradication suppression program. So asset forfeiture involves the seizure and forfeiture of the assets by law enforcement that represent proceeds of or were used to facilitate federal crimes. So I'm quoting the Department of Justice, "Law enforcement removes the tools of crimes from criminal organizations deprive wrongdoers of the proceeds of their crimes. Recover property that may be used to compensate victims and deter crime." That is the purpose of asset forfeiture. You have heard of a civil famous asset forfeiture, Bernie Madoff? That was $3.9 billion. That was actually a very exciting asset forfeiture. So in parallel to asset forfeiture, the Sheriff's Office is very interested in the equitable sharing program with this. So that consists of sharing a portion of the asset forfeitures with cooperating, cooperating law enforcement agencies such as the Sheriff, the Department of Justice, which includes DEA, FBI, USDA, and the Department of Treasury, which is like the IRS, HIS, or Homeland Security, have two separate forfeiture funds for different crimes. Equitable sharing is based on a net proceeds. And so I provided you the nice formula. You get the gross receipts from the forfeiture or the sale of the forfeited property, and then you have a whole bunch of items or expenses you deduct, including payments to victims, awards made to federal enforcement, international sharing, and so forth. And finally, you get to the net proceeds. So you're probably wondering why I'm involved. Well, actually, asset forfeitures and equitable sharing is considered a federal award and will be included on our federal schedule. So that funding actually will be set up in a special project, and it actually has to be used for specific purposes and must supplement, not supplant, the Sheriff's budget. And they are completely on board with that, so. Do you have anything to add?
That's all I have. In the past, there has been cases that have gone to the federal level where there's been forfeitures, and we've lost out on that one. And it can roll anything from these interdiction cases into money laundering also, which we've seen recently, so it'll be beneficial.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners?
You're going to get the $3.1 billion.
We only get 80% of that at most, but.
So other questions, Commissioners? Other questions? Any for us? Okay. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Shanefield.
I will make a motion to approve the participation of the Sheriff's Office in the federal's asset forfeiture and equitable sharing programs as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Next up on Tab, Tab H. Thank you, Sheriff. Oh, you're still here. Thank you, Christine. Up on Tab H, we have a request to approve, approval to reclassify existing positions to restaff Mrs. Sheriff's Office, and with us is Mr. McLean and our Sheriff. Morning, Gary.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. Before you do that, there's a request from the Sheriff's Office to reclassify an existing position, restaff that position. Just some background, we had a deputy in the Sheriff's Department who resigned, took care of his family in another location. That position was a corporal position, and for some of those, some of you that are new, there had been a prior presentation at the board about trying to eliminate those positions, to have the sergeant level positions, and as those opportunities come available to eliminate the corporal position, which results in some savings, is also unnecessary within the structure of the department. So the reclassifying, the request here is basically to fill the vacant position as a result of the resignation as a patrol officer, not as a corporal. And the cost sumaries included in your packet, obviously the amount of the savings depend upon the health insurance, but there should be some savings as a result of that.
Questions for Mr. McLean or the Sheriff? Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
I move that we approve the request to restaff and to reclassify existing corporal positions as patrol deputy and to staff full-time with benefits. Allow the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great day, Sheriff. You were out late Sunday and Sunday yesterday.
I was receiving phone calls, yes. We had to go rescue people that were trying to get around the road closure.
Thank you for your, let you guys know, thanks for their work. Been a tough weekend, been a tough winter, but I don't think so, so thank them very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Tab I, which is Solid Waste Disposal District Number One Board, Board And that will be handled by us as Commissioners, and let me, do you open your packet? And so I don't screw this up, make sure Sally, you kind of listen and get this right. This is a three-year term for the Solid Waste Disposal District Number One in Rock Springs. We have an expiring term of Virginia Bodybell. Did not receive an application for consideration of reappointment from Ms. Bodybell. So therefore, we do have new applicants, a brand-new one, Chris Meats, and then three other applicants that were submitted earlier, Amy Cox, Stephen O'Brien, Tammy Valdez. I was notified that due to a change in a job and responsibilities in that, Ms. Cox would like to not be considered for this appointment. And that's so, as much as she's still there and in our list to be considered, she, that's been relayed to you, so we do have their applications on file, and I believe any other information. So Commissioners, as you look it over, I'll just ask each of you what your thoughts are before we make a nomination to appoint, so Commissioners, go ahead. Commissioner Lloyd, do you know what?
I'll go after you.
Chris Meats can highly recommend it, and I'm sure they will qualify to fill this position, and I prefer those who serve on that board, and that's the recommendation from, from them, as to who they would like to see on that, on to serve with them. So that would be my, my recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Lloyd? Commissioner Lloyd?
I just always want to thank anyone that puts into you on one of these boards. It's great to see people want to be involved in the community, and it's kind of crazy because we went last year, I think it was almost eight months, nine months, with multiple open spots on this board that were able to fill, and having every opening and having three choices is much different than we're used to on this board. So I just thank all the candidates that put their name in there. But I would also agree, I think reviewing the applications, I think, I think Chris Meats has a great resume, and I really like some of the bridging that could eventually happen down the future, so I would like to see Chris Meats be appointed.
Okay. Mr. Shanefield?
I have not much addition to add. I have received the recommendations as well, and I also would like to thank all those who put in for these positions. The amount of time and effort put into our communities by volunteers is invaluable and very important, so thank you. I, my recommendation would be to refer to Chris Meats as well, based off of the feedback and then application for the reserve.
All right, thank you. I think we've kind of worked through that one, so I would ask which Commissioner would like to make a motion to appoint?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shanefield?
I will make a motion that we appoint Chris Meats to the Solid Waste Disposal District Number One Board.
Rock Springs.
Rock Springs.
Thank you. We have a motion to appoint Chris Meats, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any other discussion? Hearing it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Meats. Okay, with that, we'll move on to, let's go to Tab K. We have a request for approval to staff seasonal labor positions in the Road and Bridge Department, and helping us with that is Mr. Legursky and Mr. McLean. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's the, Tab J.
Oh, I see, it's a, is the facilities.
You're right, we did skip it. Let's go back to Tab K, point order, request approval to staff seasonal positions in the Facilities and Parks Department, and with us is Mr. McLean and Mr. Legursky. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. Although it's hard to believe, Spring will eventually be here. And the process of identifying seasonal help to take care of the parks and the various facilities at those parks needs to begin. There's obviously a lot of competition for the available folks, and so we're here before the board requesting to restaff eight potential six-month seasonal positions for the purposes of taking care of the parks. Historically, not all of those positions have worked for the six months, but some come on early, some leave early, some come on later and stay later. So be that as it may, these are the positions that were budgeted, and the only kind of significant issue with these, obviously, these carry over in the next fiscal year, so there's some fiscal implications for the next budget, but that those cost sumaries is included in the package.
And just to break down, so you guys know that eight people are one extra for the trap clubs, we typically have two up there for obvious reasons. Three on the mow crew, one lead worker, two other workers, and four on the, we call it the trimming and garbage group. They do all the trimming and pick up garbage and clean up whatever we need, so that's how that breaks down.
And that's for all of our parks?
All of our parks.
The county and everything?
All of our parks, and then also, last year we started doing the C Street building, this year we're going to start doing more grass out here and stuff like that, picking that up out of jail, everything.
Now, historically, has it been eight in the past?
There's been eight, but they've never been all six months. We usually have three, maybe four for six months, and then what we do is we bring a couple on in April, a couple on in May, and then that later through September, October, when they go sprinkle their lanes and all that kind of stuff.
Very good.
But most of them are three to four months, depending on summer hires.
Questions, Commissioners? What's, go ahead, Mr. President.
It is a budget, it's a budget.
Anything else? Your pleasure, Commissioners? I guess we're not going to have any seasonal help, we'll get your term ready.
Chairman, I would move that we request the vacant part-time positions in the Parks and Recreation Department is outlined.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, our next one now is request approval of staff seasonal position in the Road and Bridge Department. Mr. Legursky and Mr. McLean, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, staying on the same theme, this is a seasonal position for four months within the Road and Bridge Department. Depending on the projects, this, we've had one, we've had three, we've had two, depending on the particular projects this year. Mr. Legursky's requested this one position for the, basically the summer months to assist them in the department. We're also raising the number of packages.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Sadie?
No, unless you get a question of what he exactly does, but. What exactly does he do? Yeah, like last year, we had to do all of our asset inventory. He was out checking culverts, GPSing culverts, checking signs, taking pictures of signs and all that kind of stuff. He's out putting in cattle cars, cleaning cattle cars, putting up signs, doing everything. So it's kind of interesting, we just, three, four months ago, we just hired a full-time person, and 18 years ago, he was actually a summer hire person. So it kind of kind of full circle, it's actually kind of nice.
I think you're going to do that, I want to know.
About here. Well, I was actually down in Michigan for one summer. Wild, wild.
All right, thank you, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Shanefield?
I would like to make a motion to restaff, yeah, to retire a summer labor position, full-time with those benefits for the anticipated duration of three to four months during the summer, and allow, or authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we're up again, Mr. Legursky and Mr. McLean, to request approval to staff seasonal position in the Engineering Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. Our last one for the day is a seasonal engineering assistant that will be reporting directly to Jean in the Engineering Department. This has been, is a budget position, the cost sumaries in the packets. We've had as many as three in the condensed times, depending on the amount of workload within the department. This is an area in particular that's, I think, very representative of the school system. We have very strong people that have come to this role, have provided a lot of great work and assistance on a variety of projects. Some have come from Western Wyoming, some have come from University of Wyoming, the other places, but I, it does, I think, speak well to the technical curriculum that I discuss, and we have really strong people every year.
Okay, questions? Commissioners? Jean, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, Commissioners?
What do they do? This one? This one that helps me out, a lot of times, I can't be in one side and down the cannon at the same time, so picking tickets, measuring roads, checking out culverts, shooting dates, depends on actually what their familiarity is with stuff, so if they don't have a survey in, I put them in survey. You know, they run traffic control studies for me, they do the traffic counts, they do a bit of everything.
We were told that was one of the things you could do, is be in two places at once.
I try. I'm a big guy, but it's, when you split, you're very hard to split that together.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to staff seasonal position in the Engineering Department from Mr. Legursky.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, I'm the chairman of the city. I heard that. And we have a second from Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our next is the annual, thank you, Gary. Appreciate your time. The annual road maintenance plan for Sweetwater County and U.S. Forest Service. Mr. Legursky.
So what this is, is it's basically an amendment to a five-year forest service agreement that we have. We do this every year with the Forest Service. We meet in January, discuss what roads we're going to do. To my knowledge and talking to the foreman, the last four years, the roads haven't changed. They haven't changed the last 12 years, what we do. And we take care of basically all the roads around the National Forest on this site, so basically all the gorge roads. You know, if you look at anything, the fish holes and stuff like that, we maintain those for the Forest Service. And talking to Commissioner Johnson about this, you know, he feels that it's a good way to support the fishing, support the fishing burbs, get people in here and actually set some tax dollars instead of writing down some rough roads. So we have a guy on both sides that take care of, you know, the guy in Rock Springs basically takes care of everything, 191, south to the Utah border on that side. And we have a guy down here that takes care of basically everything, I would say, south of the interstate down to the Utah border. So it's a little bit different area because of the number of roads, of course, either side, so.
And we still have the belief that we help each other out, there's no issues.
There's no issues. They provide water for us sometimes, they're looking for the groundwater sources. If they need to replace a culvert, we help them out, they buy the culvert. It's worked really well.
Which has good work in the legislature. Very good. And they now have a new...
They've renewed everybody, just about.
New everybody in National Forest.
Yeah, the top three people we met last time, and they all seemed excited. They moved from different places. One of the guys was from Alaska, they moved down there, so they seem to fit in pretty well. That one more, and the guy that I've been dealing with, that's been there for a long time, you know, it's kind of normal, normal stuff for us, but he seemed excited about him, so that's going to get grabbed.
Going to be exciting to meet him when we have our federal agency report here when Mark sets that up, so that'll be a good thing.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2020 annual road maintenance plan between Sweetwater County and the U.S. Forest Service and allow the chairman to sign all documentation.
That's approved.
So moved by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Have a good day. Keep up the good work on the roads. Keep moving snow, buddy. All right. Up next, tab in is amendment to the Castle Rock Hospital District Human Service Agreement. And with us is Ms. Katie Doctor.
Hello, sir.
How are you?
Great. How are you doing?
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you too.
How can we be of service? Since it's a service agreement.
So I've been here a couple times, and this is finalizing the amendment to the Human Services Agreement that we have with you all to extend the contract from January 1st until June 30th of 2020. So the additional subsidy that comes along with that contract is another $150,500. And that's equivalent to what you gave us the first six months. And I just wanted to add that we just had our February board meeting, and I wanted to report back to you that this subsidy is really helping the ambulance service. This is the first time that we feel like the ambulance service in Green River is sustainable as is. We lost $4,200, which of course is miles ahead of where we've been in years past. So our revenue is up this year. We've experienced more calls than we anticipated, but that's really random, you can't predict that at all. So that's contributing to the additional revenue, of course, that comes into the ambulance. But I just wanted to report back to you that we're doing really well and this subsidy is of course helping us in this. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Doctor? Commissioners? Anything? Couple of questions to Human Service Agreement. You okay with your hatchet look at it?
I have, and the change is essentially been of this month-to-month that the commission for Castle Rock can terminate before, with written notice, before the next month. So in other words, anytime during the month, you determine it for the following month that's coming. And there was clarification as to the payment's timeframe that we had discussed before, so that payment would be due from the county 45 days after the end of the month. So that there's no, that's clear for both parts.
Very good. Very good. Your fees, are they in line with Sweetwater Medics?
The fees that we bill?
Yeah.
Yes. Now that Sweetwater Medics has adjusted theirs...
And they adjusted theirs up, right?
Yeah, we were charging more.
I just wanted to ensure that.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Other questions? If there's none, Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amendment to the Castle Rock Hospital District Human Services Agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a vote. Motion by Commissioner Smith is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Gentlemen, a question I forgot to ask you when we were doing the MO review for Ashley Forest. Do you have a chance to read it?
Yeah, I thought so, but my apologies, I should have asked it that time. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much. Oh, your brother, hi.
Oh, I love you.
Thanks.
I knew you were a piece of smoke.
You were?
I knew you were a piece of smoke.
Alrighty. Next up is Tab O, progress update on the Lagoon Drive Consolidated Facility. And with us is Mr. Hammack and Mr. Brennan, gentlemen, and Mr. Legursky.
My brother.
Mr. Hammack. Oh, there he is. All right. Hammack, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning. We're all ears.
So I thought this was a good time just to bring everybody up to date. We kind of reached a point in the thing where we're having 99% consensus from my department and our guys and facilities in general, Mike's guys and everything on the floor plan and stuff like that. And before we really dive into the floor plan, just to get starting point to kind of show you guys what we've done, where we're at budget-wise, where our schedule is on track and everything like that. So hopefully you guys took a look at the big plans. I apologize for the small prints that you guys got, but there were some large prints in the office that dropped off on Tuesday. So with that, we're here to answer your questions. We have a little bit of a slideshow to kind of open things.
Okay, very good. I would like to, like to also, if we got questions, our fire warden's here as well.
Yep.
And TJ, he's just a fire warden, Mike Bornasian are fire wardens, so they're here if we have any questions. You okay with that?
Yep.
All right. So, thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, Tom with EDA. And we are at the schematic stage of the submittal process and design for both the fire station and the public works facility. Sam, you got that kicked up there? So as a reminder, we are out at Lagoon Drive, and really, we just wanted to give a quick status and open it up to any questions and answers. What we're seeing here right now is the schematic site plan. You see the Lagoon Drive from the lower end with 191 South to the east, or to the right side of the screen. We're really creating a facility, or a joint facility, I should say, that is consolidation for public works, as we've talked about in the past, of the three existing public works facilities that are spread between Rock Springs and Green River, as well as the fire station that's currently co-located with facilities, with fleet maintenance, excuse me. Both of these projects are really, you know, significant investments for the county, and we are planning with a 20-year planning horizon in terms of what the actual need is. But these facilities really will continue to serve for decades beyond that. Frankly, we're designing these as a minimum 50-year facilities. And so each of these buildings are also planned to be able to continue to expand on the site to continue to meet ongoing programs far, much farther out than the 20 years that we can predict. Let's go to the next plan. So with the county fire, we are anticipating, or, you know, responding to frankly, the current needs that they have, but also really anticipating a time when this facility would likely accommodate, currently peak season, it's about 20 people between full-time staff and volunteers. And really housing, the, all of the equipment that currently, right now, is spread in multiple locations throughout the county. Some of it stored indoors, and unfortunately, some of it that's currently stored outdoors. But we'll really, again, continue to serve the housing, the administrative, the training, and the response needs for the fire if it's going to be next one. Public Works, you know, currently really stored between those three facilities, as I mentioned. Same thing is, you know, one of the, some of the challenges are, as we've heard, as we've presented to you in the past, is unsafe conditions, lack of overhead clearance, unsafe in some regards just because staff is split between multiple locations, that, you know, the buddy system really is critical out in the work phase. They need to have two people. If somebody leaves, then, you know, either they need to find a replacement or, critical, dangerous operations cease until they've got that buddy back in place. We're also providing indoor storage for the snowplows. They're currently swapping those out during the winter time and storing them in the work phase. It's been a, it's been a make-do situation that they've done very well with, but this really allows them to have that separate indoor heated storage for the snowplows during the winter. Those would be very well used moving forward. So both of these facilities, as I said, are really anticipating, you know, responding to current demand and anticipated demand. But as we move forward, we're, as I said, we're at the schematic stage of this process. We anticipate completing the bid documents in June, at which point we would go out competitively bid for the project. Typical to past projects, we anticipate pre-qualifying general contractors, so we really make sure that we're getting good quality general contractors that will do a good job, similar to what Roadhouse was able to do on the Justice Center, but also taking advantage of the competitive bid. And again, we're really targeting move-in in the spring of 2022, before the fire season for that year. Really trying to hold to that schedule overall, and we are on schedule. With regard to the costs, we have completed our cost estimates, and the good news is we are in the overall budget of $21,700 for the total project and specific to construction. We have had to dip into the cost, or the contingencies a little bit, but we are still in very, very good shape moving forward and continue to work closely with both Mike and Gene and others to make sure that we're not spending money unwisely as we move forward. And with that, gentlemen, and maybe I would like to open the door to questions from the
Commissioners? Questions?
Gene, I know there was a land issue we were working through at the BLM. Where are we at with that?
We're currently still working through it. They were supposed to have everything to me before this meeting. SHIP perhaps to get involved, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, because anytime there's a land swap and there's something within like a half a mile, they have to deal with. They have a 30-day period when they respond, and they wait all 30 days, so that forces off until April. And it'll be situated. We're already squared up with White On and everything's good there. You guys signed that a little two or three meetings ago, but with BLM, we're just working through the process and it's slow.
So, and we're not here in Sweetwater County yet, but I know in a lot of communities, they're moving towards combined ambulance and fire services. Would this allow for the expansion, if needed, in the future of this facility to fit that?
I think it would. And Mike, it would probably be better to answer that, but I would say, just in terms of the facility, the, you know, we are anticipating 24-hour residential on-site. And then the rest of it really is managing the equipment within the apparatus phase. I believe we have that covered, but Mike, where are you?
Mike, I'm right here. Mike, will you come forward and please join us? Should I just interrupt? Please.
I was hoping I'd have to be in the front room this time.
No, this time. We want you part of this. So the answer...
Mr. Schoenfield, yes. It will easily accommodate both the equipment and storage and operations if need be.
Okay. Other questions?
The, this is first, we've seen the plans, right, Gene?
Yeah.
And they haven't really been accessible to anybody else up to this point in time.
No, it's taken us a little bit to get here, to get consensus of, you can imagine the buildings and flows and everything like that.
Yeah, I fully agree, and that's why it's important to, you know, you be a big part of it, Mike be a big part of it, with the architect, to get them to appoint. But at some point in time, plans have to be available for the public, as well as, I believe, for, I'll even say, you know, IT should be able to look at them, and social custodial, which you're a part of, and that type thing, even law enforcement to make sure of that type. So we want to make sure the plans are available and have, give people opportunity to look at them, that type of thing. And so where are those plans located?
I could email them out, or I can print out copies, it doesn't matter. I think I've already talked to, I have not talked to the sheriff, but I can take him and say, they're not taking the files to not be able to email to anybody. Put them on a shirt, it's not...
So I'd like to see us have that available. Plus, I'd like to see a hard copy available in one place where if someone walks in and says, hey, I want to see those, take a look.
I have a copy in my office, and there's also a copy in your guys' office.
Yeah, and I think, I think two of the other aspect of it is give people time to, you know, we got a copy here, I see, give people time to look at it, especially us as Commissioners, to think so we'd have questions. Because I, I'll say this, as much as I, as much as I know, our architect has designed it all, but the people that have to answer exactly what we're putting in those buildings are going to be you for bridge, Road and Bridge, and Mike for fire department.
And that's one of those things we really concentrate on. I know Sam and I and Tom are probably in contact, if not every day, every other day. Mike's in contact with them pretty much anytime he needs to be. And then we've been having, by month, the meetings, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page and what, you know, what have we seen, what have we looked at, what have we went through. We've even gone as far as reaching out to mechanics and Road and Bridge. I know Mike's talked to TJ a lot about what does this space look like, what actually needs to go in this space, what equipment's in there, do we have it in, can we mark out a space, and, you know, what, Road and Bridge, like the clean room, what does that need to look like? What ceiling height is it? So we've really been cognizant of that, so it's a 50-year project.
Well, and this, like the justice facility, the sheriff's administration building, the storage building, everything is designed to prepare for the future, to add on, and I think that's important, that this is the same way and that type of thing. So I mean, it even goes so far as, I'll say it, you know, when we built the Justice Center, there were plans to add on a pub for the jail if we need to, even to the point where cement tunnel was in it, you know. So I mean, the planning is there, it's all set up, and I just want to make sure this moves forward, so.
I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've toured, personally made appointments and met with, I've toured 19 different fire, new fire facilities, and new being built in the last seven years, or newer, in three states. in the last seven years or newer in three states as part of this, trying to get it right the first time, what's works, what doesn't work for the fire service now and in the future, especially those departments that are much further along than we are. And from operations to even SOPs, to how to manage their facility and what challenges they see, and learn definitely a few things along the way. So the fire service as a whole has a really strong network of folks that support these kinds of projects when the next brother in the fire service is looking at building a station or buying an apparatus, and a huge network force to pull on it. And that's been a big benefit for us, from cost to flow to how do we prevent and do our best to cancel the fire service, which is our number one, our number one killer right now. And so when you design a facility like this, how do we keep the bad stuff out, how do we keep it contained, and how do we keep it clear of the living quarters and the office quarters, and how do we have a transitionary for that? And it's been a big piece of how and why what you have in front of you is built the way you're designed to be built the way it is.
The question's, man, I'll get you, Rob. The question I have, and this comes back from my past life, is you get a chance to do it right, you get a chance to do it once, you better do it right. Gene, is this done right for you?
So far it is.
So far.
We spent a lot of time looking from the public works side, and I've learned a ton from Mike and these guys, because I know nothing about fire stations and I don't want to be on a fire station, so, but learning about cancers and hot zones and cold zones and all of that different stuff. We've even taken that into the public works and toured a couple of facilities that did it right and didn't do it right. And that's why if you look at it and you see the bays on the end for the plows, they come in dirty, they need it to frost, they need to be down there. Our mechanic's base need to be cleaned. That's how we attract workers. That's how we do different stuff like that. You know, and then you actually, you go up into the office and that's, we go ahead and clean their place because different, different type of people work in those offices. So we really looked at that, we looked at the layout of the building, they've looked at wind direction and wind speed, and try to get drifting concern out of the way and everything like that. We really spent some time in doing this.
Very good. Mike, same question for you. We only get to do it once. Is it done right?
Yeah, it's done right, and it'll last us, it'll last us to be able to work with that for like 50 years out, no matter what the fire department looks like, whether we do eventually serve in the EMS capacity or in the full-time capacity. And it'll serve all our needs for this town.
Very good.
One of the things that I, and I don't want to brag on these two guys, but they have an amazing network of mechanicals, the Redwood, we're a lot of mechanical, electrical engineers that have a vast experience, so we've looked at ground source heat pumps, we've looked at overhead stuff, we've looked at everything to try to make sure the cost, and not only the cost of the building upfront, but the cost leading us into the next 50 years, what does that look like? You know, since I took over the facilities, I've been tracking utilities per building, per month. That adds up a hundred. You guys would be surprised at how much we spend in just utilities, water, sewer, gas and power. So when we start looking into some of these stuff, there might be a little bit more upfront costs, but in 12 or 15 years, they pay off and you're actually making money off of it. So looking into that and giving low costs and doing stuff like that, I think is fearful, and these guys have been great help for that.
Thank you. Mr. Brannan, tough questions. When I take a look at these two buildings and look at the total cost of the project, is the Roden Bridge building and the fire department, are they both within the average cost to build such facilities?
Yes. These are not overdesigned, we're not building Taj Mahals, we're designing Taj Mahals. I actually want to pick up on a couple of comments that were made before, is we take a lot of pride in making sure that we are listening to what these gentlemen and their teams need. We have a lot of expertise. We have expertise in fire stations, we have expertise in public works and other facilities, but we are not the experts. We have to design facilities that are tailored to their operations, not what I think their operations are, but what they think they're, and know that their operations are. And we want to make sure that we get it right. We also make sure that through that process, that we're really examining all of the assumptions that we bring to the table based on our past experience, all the assumptions that they bring to, you know, that they have based on their past experience, so that we're not spending, we're not creating things that really aren't needed, or we're not recreating the same mistakes that they're currently, you know, they're currently, because they're currently kind of limited within their existing facilities. So the first thing is, is that we want to make sure that we are creating facilities that are really tailored and intelligently designed for today, for their current needs and their projected needs. And yes, when we do that, then first off, I think we're spending money wisely. And again, we're not, we're not overdesigning, we're not underdesigning, we're not designing Taj Mahals, we're not designing buildings that are expensive to maintain. In terms of how do these costs compare to other buildings, they are very much in the realm of typical fire station costs and typical public quarters. And I've said to this commission in past years on past projects, one of the challenges you have here in a very rural location is what is the cost for Rock Springs and Green River and Sweetwater? We have seen over my 20 years of working with, within Sweetwater County, with both the county as well as on other projects, that the economy locally can swing quite a bit, especially when the mines are booming. Suddenly, you know, I remember when we were doing the jail, it was hard to get any, anybody because they could go work for the, they could go work for the mines 20 years ago, get $100 an hour, and double, and double that in overtime, you know, they didn't have to hard bid everything. We spend a lot of time really making sure that we're understanding what the local economy is, so that we're also, as we bring cost estimates to you, and we're looking at those, that we have a high level of confidence that we will be on budget, and I would say that we have that level of confidence as well. We are looking at tilt-up construction, which is, if you're familiar with the Wyoming Machiner, thank you, building that is also tilt-up construction is durable, is cost-effective. We're making a couple of tweaks to it to make it an even more improved building, a very cost-effective product that many people say, why aren't you building the building, why aren't you doing the apparatus may as a metal building? Well, metal buildings have their place, but these metal buildings, in my opinion, are not 50-year buildings, but also the uniquenesses of the requirements. Gene needs a bridge crane. Trying to adapt a metal building to incorporate a bridge crane, and all of a sudden, that very inexpensive building became much more expensive to a point where the tilt-up is in fact a better, better cost per square foot price point. Those are all the things that we're looking at in terms of that.
Appreciate that answer. Appreciate that. Other questions? Go ahead. Mr. Schoenfield.
Mr. Laverce, were you here when we were talking about the strategic plan and incorporating what Duke Solutions is coming up with and everything?
No, I was not. I was trying to listen to it downstairs when I got a phone call, so I missed it, sorry.
So we, we would really like to include this project, because it is a future-looking project, it is, you know, the future of our county and what the needs are for our county, as well as the buildings that Duke Solutions was looking at, as well as the summary that we received on the facilities that this building would be replacing or these buildings would be replacing. And I think that that with moving forward with this project probably needs to happen sooner rather than later, and I would like to propose that we, you know, we start moving on that probably after our next meeting and really get some more things into place. So just for you, looking forward, getting things prepared for that, because I think that this really has a strong tie-in with our strategic planning and our goals for the county as a whole, facilities is huge, it's a huge cost, you know, to upkeep them, the utilities involved in them, and that's something you really want to focus on with our strategic plan, and you guys have a great start on this.
I agree, you know, one of the interesting things about that when you start talking to people about strategic planning takes on sometimes life that it's only what your guys' goals are. But the interesting thing is when you look at our budget, we have labor, operating, capital. Labor's somewhat fixed, it goes up every year, that's just how it is. Operating isn't very much of our budget. Capital's a huge, huge thing, and when you start looking at the vastness of our county, the buildings, you know, I have 3,600 culvers. That doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start putting a $4,000 price card on culvers, that's, and that all wraps into the strategic planning and making sure that we're set for the future.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Other questions, commissioners? Treasurer, Rob Sallard.
Mr. Chairman, this information today creates a significant problem with respect to our issues. Been in contact with Gene over the last couple of months with respect to this, and we've been operating under the assumption that we would be able to have these leases in place, that our attorneys would be working on them today, and that he would be finalizing this as of the next meeting. That's not going to happen. As part of the RFP that we had for the funding, for the lease revenue issue that we had talked about, our agreement expires on the 15th of this month. We will not be able to renew that at this point in time, which is possibly, with news that came out today, not a bad thing. We may be much better off going out to a new RFP, but it raises concerns with respect to how you're going to fund this, this program, and you need to be looking at those options.
And since it's expiring, that means you'll have to approve a new RFP at the next meeting?
What you'll have to do is determine whether you choose to fund this with reserves, whether you want to go out for a new RFP or something of that nature. If you choose to do that, I'll be glad to work again and work, to try and get a new RFPs in place with those entities, but I think that would be our best avenue would be to go out for a new RFP. You know, set new deadlines with respect to that, and kind of come up with a new plan as to how we're going to look at funding it.
All right, so I would request, based on that information, that one agenda item for the next meeting will be to have the conversation to whether or not we go out for an RFP for funding for the building, is that the right terminology?
For the lease revenue.
For the lease revenue?
On the.
Will you check with Rob Sallie and make sure it's on the agenda in proper terms and that? Because that sounds like that's what we have to do.
It sounds like, you know, the interesting thing, I think that, and Rob and I briefly spoke about this when I found out the news, when we look at this, it's up to you guys to figure out how we're going to fund this building. But with interest rates where they are and looking at what they are, I want to say it's free money, but it's pretty close. And the interesting thing is when you take that money and turn it into a project like this, like the Justice Center or something like that, was relatively the same size, 47% of the work went to Sweetwater contractors, Sweetwater County contractors?
Forty-two percent went to Sweetwater contractors, Justice Center. Seventy-eight percent went to Wyoming contractors, in terms of value.
You know, and when you look at that, and you look at a way to do that, it's almost like a, I want to say a mini stimulus package, but I know years ago, when I sat on the ADC committees for the state of Wyoming, White Dot uses a factor, any time they come into a town and they have a project, that's in a town that's led to a local contractor, that money turned over somewhere between five and eight times, and that's a, that's a good thing.
So good, thanks.
Rob, Mr. Chairman, I intended to talk to you about this a little bit later on today, but just because it came up with respect to this, this morning, the Federal Reserve met in an emergency meeting and lowered interest rates again, the Fed funds rate by 50 basis points. It's probably in reaction to the global pandemic, which is going on and things of that nature, but in looking at what that's done to interest rates, and we need to talk about this with respect to other things also, but as far as our investments over the near term and long term, right now, if I were to go out and try, try and buy a six-month investment, I'm getting under 1%. Out to 10 years, I'm getting under 1% with respect to what's going on in the markets at this point in time right now. Now, we have accumulated a lot of cash with the anticipation of doing this project, so it's something I wanted to do by any means, but we've had to do that in anticipation of what we were going to do to fund the cash flow for this building. We've got a lot of money in cash that we're going to be investing at very low rates in the near future. It's going to affect our short-term interest income, it's going to affect our long-term interest income, and that's another part of everything that you have to look at globally.
Then I would hope that part of this next agenda item for next meeting, you'll include this information as well in conversation.
Absolutely.
For us, so, you know, help guide us through it. That's your job, my friend. Okay?
Interesting environment right now.
Very much so, very much so. It is all over, but thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, I think we have that, but anyhow, let's go back. Any more questions for our tech, Gene, Mike?
Comment, thanks for all the hard work. It's a good project, and as the chairman says, we want to do it right, so it sounds like it's in the right direction for sure, so thanks for all the efforts you've been doing.
Thank you. I don't think so. You got a headache? You got a headache?
No, just pondering a thought.
I know, and I could see you pondering. That's why I sit down here, so I can get a good view of you.
That's a pretty bad view of that. I don't know, I'm deciding real quick as I ponder.
Okay, sorry. Well, while you're doing that, I'll, I'll just say, yeah, I think we drilled down to doing just exactly where we wanted to get at this point in time, and, and there's still some fine tuning, nice sense and that type of thing. Now we've got documents for people to look at, Mike's people can look, your people can look, people in the courthouse can look, community can look now, and it's all available, and we've got an idea of costs and that type of thing, so we'll look forward to hearing more information at the next meeting regarding lease revenue, regarding more funding-wise and everything. So before I close this piece, Mike, I see you brought firefighters with you and everything, and I want you to know that I want to tell them thank you for the work they do. A number of you, I don't know which ones, if not all you, were out on the interstate east of town, Sunday through the night, yesterday, didn't get home till late afternoon yesterday, providing first responders, providing assistance out there, probably what's been recorded as one of the largest wrecks on the interstate, not only one spot, but two spots in a very short time of each other, and it's taken a lot of hard work on your part as well as other people. Unfortunately, there were lives lost, that's a sad thing about it, and we'll never recover from those things, but from myself, the rest of the commission, people of Sweetwater County, to you as first responders and firefighters, we appreciate what you do, appreciate the work you're doing, and what you gave over the last 48, 72 hours, Mike, you and your crew, just can't tell you how much we appreciate it, and you, you know, I don't know, you don't hear that very much, but we do appreciate your work and thank you. Thank you for what you do for Sweetwater County. All righty? Any other questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Do you guys want individual copies of this in large size or?
You know, here's.
Thirty-one.
Large size?
Yeah.
Like paper copy?
It doesn't have to be this big, we can do a half of that.
All I need to know is where Sally's got this one. And, but where would you like?
I know where to find it.
I'm good, because I think I can come in here during an off time.
Okay, you want to?
And we can get some half-size.
We get half-size for, Commissioner Schoenfield? Okay, thank you.
It's easy.
Thanks for getting here.
Thank you.
Safe drive back. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. You guys? Thank you.
But it's bigger, Gene. Is it 50 cents?
We're removing Tab Q.
I have a little cash in my purse, I should be okay.
Okay, with this, for the public, we did amend our agenda and remove Tab P, which was a resolution for Welcome Home Wyoming program, and removed Tab Q, which was strategic planning, with the strategic planning, both those agenda items be on the next meeting. So we're a few minutes early, moving into 11:50 for Six Penny. Restroom break, please? Okay, we're going to be back here, be back here at 11:45 so we can even start early on the Six Penny, all right? With the strategic planning, both those agenda items will be on the next meeting. So we're a few minutes early, moving into 11:50 for Six Penny. Restroom break, please? Okay. We're going to be back here 11:45, so we can even start early on the Six Penny. All right? We'll call this meeting back to order. Just for the public's sake, I will mention one more time that Tab P and Tab Q on our agenda were removed, and both addressed next meeting. So we have left Tab R, and that's the Six Penny. And then under Other, we have one more item, which is approval of public depositories with Rob. But before we get going, I do want to introduce our newly appointed Solid Waste District Number One for Rock Springs representative. He's in the audience, Chris Meads. Chris, will you stand?
Thank you. Thank you for the line. Look forward to having you on there.
All right. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Shainfield, Commissioner Shainfield.
So after our last meeting, I did send an email out to all of the Six Penny entities requesting if they had changes in their priorities or anything additional to come to front of the commission, that they reach out to me. I did receive a few changes in priorities. Rock Springs has not necessarily, it's an updated priority list, but they also have requested an additional $360,000. I'm going to allow Councilman West to come up and speak with us about that request. Green River has made adjustments on their priorities, as I have sent out to everyone. And then the component units, the sewer districts were the same. They both expressed appreciation of being included. Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County, was the same. They did not have any updates. I did not hear back from Long Siders. Pier Granger and Fairlil said that they were not changing their priorities. And then the Fairgrounds had a concern that they expressed to us with if they went to do the improvements that were funded through the Six Penny that we had proposed, that they had a concern about water. And so I want to have a discussion around that today as well. The final thing that we need to do as a commission is review this underwriter engagement letter with Stiefel. And this is the agreement that we are going to start working together with Stiefel on this. My goal was to have this approved and then to present Stiefel with the priorities that have been given to us. And then moving forward, I believe that we should have a workshop with all of the entities, discussion of how they feel things need to be put on the ballot, and then working forward through some issues and allowing Stiefel to step in and kind of run that process. Stiefel has expressed that once they see what the priorities are, they are going to be doing some research in our communities to best prioritize how we want to put these on the ballot.
Very good. All right. So let's start out with one thing at a time. So I, and you can pick it, because you named a number of things. So let's start out with whichever you'd like.
Let's start with Mr. West.
This is Councilman West here. Keaton, come on up, please. Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, thank you for your time. Keaton West with City of Rock Springs, representing the Six Penny, I guess, Committee for Rock Springs. As you all know, our original request was $42,410,000. That included core projects as well as three sponsorship projects. You guys made your cut, and the dividend distribution was based off the $80 million. We were taking the $29 million. Since then, the governing body has eliminated one of the sponsorship projects in the multi-use facility. So your cut was about $13,410,000. That project was $13,500,000. And so that's cut us a little bit deeper than just the multi-use facility. So we have a shortfall of about $360,000. Governing body feels as though they've cut enough out of our core projects, and so we would have to cut out an additional sponsorship project if we even afford that $29 million amount. So we come before you to ask for an additional $360,000 to make hole in our other two sponsorships along with our core projects.
Okay. Outside of your core projects, what are your two sponsorship projects?
The YWCA at $3.5 million, and the airport terminal expansion for $3.6 million.
This is neat. Tell me, can I ask which one is the first priority of the two sponsorships?
We do not have a...
Okay, very good. Thank you. Questions, commissioners, regarding that question?
Comments? We received a letter some time ago, email letter, and it, you know, appreciate the work they've done and showing them to where they are. And we're in this process now of where we are. And I think it's a great time to extend that $360,000 more to them to be able to accomplish the things that they've set forth.
So you're agreeing to extend the $360?
Absolutely.
Mr. Lloyd, Commissioner Lloyd?
Not sure yet. I want to hear what other people have to say. But my concern is, and I'll be honest, I think every, I think the City of Rock Springs has made significant cuts, but as have all the entities. And I worry if we grant one extension of an extra $368,000, are we opening the door to five more requests in that concept? So I kind of want to see where we play out today before I make a formal decision and see what the other municipalities and entities also say. And then I guess, to me, I guess, you know, the question there would be where we would be pulling that $368,000 out of. My assumption would probably be, since we kind of willy-nilly threw an extra $600,000 into the hospital, I think is what it was, that would make the most sense to me. But I would like to know where that money would be coming from, how we reallocate, and how it affects the other municipalities before we move forward. But I do appreciate the City of Rock Springs' works. And I can just be honest, I think Keaton's been a great communicator to us and to me specifically, when I've had questions. And so I do appreciate that. But those are the concerns I have before I move forward with committing to that.
Very good.
Sounds complex. Commissioner Shainfield?
At this point in time, I do feel, I feel that it would be smart of us, $360,000 to make a $3.5 million project work. I think that that makes sense to us. I want to, also, and this may even be a discussion that we need to have in workshop, because in looking at bonding, I've heard that some of the entities don't want to bond. And so I don't know if we can make up the difference somewhere in there. I don't know how that works. And so I think that, I think it's something that we need to, we need to work through. But I do think in the end that we should look at the $360,000 to complete those projects.
Yeah, it's definitely something we need to take a look at, because, and that type of thing. Where it would come from is very important. The other thing, too, is I just want to remind fellow commissioners, we are without a commissioner today. And as will be the practice next week when we all get together, and you won't be here, but the commissioner will be reminded that any action that's taken today, if they so choose, want to revisit it because they were gone, they can ask to have it on the agenda the following week, which is how that will work. So our question becomes, if you want to make a decision today where it would come from, remember it would be something we can put in. How soon do you need to know?
Sooner the better.
Sooner the better. Well, I do, you know, I, did you go back to what Commissioner Smith said? Just thanks to your bookkeeping, that you brought it to our attention, that that amount of money was, our addition wasn't right. We did take that $600,000, put it in the hospital, it was. And I would go along with anybody else and say that's, if it came anywhere, it would have to come from that piece and that type of thing. And again, too, that's the only place it could come. The other aspect is, is I do believe with some of the work that's been done in the previous legislature, that there's also been, with these Six Pennies, there's always been overrun. And I don't remember what we awarded in the last Six Penny for overrun to different entities, but it was decent, wasn't it, Rob?
It was a little over $2 million.
Divided up? Yeah. So we do know there could be some overrun. As long as however we write that on the ballot, that overrun can... we write that on the ballot, that overrun can be used for these projects, I think there's some anticipation that could be overruns too, which will help you out as well.
Could, because there's also legislation that says that some of that overrun will go back to just the county, and they can use it as a reserve account, if you want, I don't know where that's out.
Yeah, that's, that's going through the legislation, so if that could, but again too, I, you know what, I still think we're all in this together, I'll just say that right up front, we're all in it together, and however that legislation works out, we as a county need to work with our entities in that arena, and that type of thing, but we'll see how that checks out, so. Do you, as a commission, wish to move forward with this request, and put it out there?
I would like to move forward here, if possible, first, if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Just, and then quick comment about the bonding too, because I mean, you guys have decided on the $80 million cap, but that wouldn't include bonding fees.
Good point.
That's additional to the 80 million, and I know some have, I mean even us, we at one point agreed that we may not want to bond all projects, just because construction in season is slow, and it's hard to get all of them done in the first year or two anyway, and so might be an additional interest, even if it is a low interest rate, we got discussing earlier, let that money roll in, but then at one of your other meetings, you also said if you're going to bond, you're just going to bond whole thing, so that's your, your prerogative, so. Well, I, we have looked at each of these different sponsorships too, and met with the representatives, seen if we could scale them back, you know, in terms of why, they basically said that they cannot, if they do scale it back, there's going to be a whole project, I think I included that in the email to you guys, simply because they've already cut a half million dollars out of the furnishings portion of their project, and as far as the airport goes, as you know, they've also obtained funding to the FAA, FAA, YDOT, the business companies, so it's much leaving, you guys are us to know that, and where we're at, and why we're here.
And the way I'll approach it is, when we come down to bonding, that conversation for me will be with those bonding people, so they can break that out, so I have a really good clear understanding, you know, we'll all do that together, and that type of thing, because I, the bonding thing is still not real clear in my mind, Keaton, so you may say something, and I'll shake my head and say okay, and someone else may come up and say something a little different, and I'll shake my head and say okay, but until I really get the people who do the bonding to sit down and say, hey, here's what it's going to cost, here's what it does, and this type of thing, I'm not sure where the bonding is, I'll just say that right up front myself, okay? But I, I think it's another thing we have to look at, I agree with you.
Appreciate the consideration, I'm just ready to...
No, I think it's a, I think it's a fair request, all right? Thank you, Keaton. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Clevenger?
Yeah.
And Grand, would you like to come up? They prioritized, and I sent that out to everybody, so.
Yeah, just to...
Identify yourself.
Brief Clevengers, administrative, different things, I was going to...
I know.
I, I wanted to, you know, first of all, thanks, finally getting to a number, we were able to add one more item on our priority list by reworking everything, going through numbers, I can tell you though, that from my understanding, and that's why I had sent the note about bonding as well, is that previously I believed that bonding was included in the number, we had lost over somewhere maybe close to a million dollars on that, and that's one of the reasons why, if we were to pull that from the bonding here, we wouldn't be able to do the projects, that's why we, we set it up this way. So if we were to come and ask for, you know, for additional projects, we have a second list, we're not coming to do that, and we'd ask for, you know, our Parks and Rec Center, which is, you know, which is way down the list for some people, I would, from the people we've talked with, with the amount of changes, like Keaton on the Rock Springs side, I would, if they had a $360,000 request, we're not going to come ask for $360,000, or half of that amount on that side, I think the goal should be to try and work somewhere around that $80 million figure, if it's 80,360,000, then that's what should be, you know, I mean in terms of trying to figure out where, you know, from, but that's just my thought process, but we are down to this level, we know that with the engineering and design it's going to take, you know, we won't be able to get started on these for a little bit, so we'd wait for the collections to come through, we do have some overages from the last one, that we will continue to do some infrastructure projects in terms of resurfacing, and some of, you know, some road stuff that would give us, you know, allow us to get through that first year of collections, and perhaps where we can show work being done on the Six Penny sooner rather than later.
Very good, thanks, Greer. So your total dollar amount has changed?
No.
Okay, very good.
The other request that we received was from the Fairgrounds, there isn't anyone here from the Fairgrounds, have you all reviewed the email that was sent out? Do you guys think we just want to know how the conversation has been as commissioners?
I think, yeah, go ahead, where are you, come from your first email with them, would you mind?
Trying to pull the email, boy, let me just read the email, is that...
Sure.
Right, right. I can just reiterate.
Okay, it's, we appreciate the commission's support, and are ready to proceed with the exhibit hall upgrade and expansion as approved for the Six Penny, our concern is that the water system redundancy for 1.135 million wasn't included in that list, in order to maintain fire flows, the water system must be upgraded before we are able to proceed with any improvements on the grounds. Our hope is that the county has another funding source for this project, so when the Six Penny, or Six Cent is approved, we can proceed as planned, below the narrative explained in the water system redundancy project. During peak season, our current water flow rates for fire protection are capacity, our entire water system distributes from a single source located on the north side of the property, with our current arrangement, if there is a disruption in water service for any reason, we would lose water to all 400 acres. We have met with the Joint Powers Water Board, City of Rock Springs, and JFC Engineering, and to ensure all safety requirements for fire flows are met, we need to install an additional, additional water line. With a second water line, we would meet or exceed all safety standards and have the infrastructure necessary for future growth. The second water line would be installed on the southwest section of the property, that upgrade would allow us to complete a loop of fresh water throughout the facility, as well as give us the redundancy needed to ensure constant water flow. Thanks, and that's from Larry.
Yeah, so I think Larry spells it out well there, from what I understand, from serving as the liaison of the board, as they feel, to be able to expand, they have to have that water project, they kind of see it as a health and safety issue, due to the fact that they don't have the expanded water, they really don't have the ability to expand their projects, which is what I think he spells out very clearly.
But they're not, it's not requesting us to adjust our Six Penny, so I just wanted to bring that up as awareness, I don't think we need to take any action on it right now, but we have the conversation.
From my understanding, and I, and I apologize if I'm speaking wrong for that board, was there could be, I think either reconsideration of it being on the Six Penny, or letting us know that we're going to have to find a, you know, they're going to have to find a funding mechanism to, to make sure that that project does happen for the other project to go through, so if we don't look at the Six Penny option, they will be coming, most likely coming to us for the options to create that water project, so, go ahead.
Can I also, when they say it wasn't included, the 1.1 to 5 million wasn't included in the list, that's not our list, though.
No, it's not, it's their list.
They presented a list with three projects, one was this remodel, then another project was a water project, which I think might have been this one, as well as then there was the third project down there, which was an indoor arena. We specifically asked them, when we put this on, the Six Penny, people that were here, what happened to the water project, is this part of this, and they said no. They were specifically asked, Commissioner Johnson, I believe, asked them specifically.
He did, that's right, I didn't know that.
And they said no, that wasn't part of the Six Penny. I mean, my guess, if they want to switch the Six Penny projects around...
That's what I was going to say.
I understand, which is fine with me, and then you'll have about $8 million more dollars to distribute amongst others.
That was my thought as well, you're telling me, here's the dollar amount, you decide where it goes, and so if they want to spend it on the water project, I think that's, that's fine, it's just, it wasn't always presented to us.
So, yeah, I mean, I think Johnson would see that, he'd be like, where'd you get your numbers? But, no, when I read it, it's basically, I don't think, or my thinking, because they're not asking you to change projects, they're kind of in a way saying it can't go forward, my answer's okay, but then also I feel like they're telling us, we better come up with another source of funding, and...
We're asking.
Or asking, or, I've been in those asking positions before, so, anyhow, okay, so I, I don't, my preference is, is, you know, they'll have an opportunity to come as we set this even more so, stay with the project they entered, or do we substitute? You have a thought?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think that we need to take any action on that today, I would like to know what the commissioner's opinion is on taking action on the City of Rock Springs request. I did look at the numbers, so the first priority for the hospital was at 1.121,961, so round that up to 1.22, or 7.122, sorry, and they received 7.8, so that is slightly over.
That's an additional 6 we gave them.
And it's, yeah, it's almost 7.
And it was part of the 25 million from the county.
And that's county money that we've allocated, so, I mean, in my opinion, splitting that would potentially be a good option, it would allow them to complete theirs, it would allow the City of Rock Springs. I have to apologize, I thought that we had everything covered with the City of Rock Springs, so the 360 is, that's, that's an adding error that I didn't...
I don't think there's a mistake made with numbers, I think as they chose their projects and things, they could see that if they could get an additional 360, especially with their two sponsorship projects, correct me if I'm wrong, Keaton, if they could get an additional 360, that would be able to afford them the opportunity to do both sponsorship projects, and I think, you know, we, we, that money was there, had we, that day, or that 600,000 we put there, and the other, the other thing too, is, the reason I like the project so well, that they're trying to fund is, it's, I believe it's for daycare, it's for the...
Before and after school care.
Care, which through our needs assessment, through things we've done, that's such a high priority for the county, and we know that daycare for, especially for single parents or low-income parents, is the best thing we can do to impact poverty, so I think I'm very much supportive of trying to find that additional money for Rock Springs, and I would look at the liaison from the hospital, and, you know, do you think it'll cut much in there?
I don't think so, with the projects that are...
Because, I mean, we're covering their original projects.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, anyhow, so, before we go, okay, so we talked about, I see there's other units here from the Reliance and Jamestown, right? Any questions?
There were no changes to any of your projects, correct?
No.
They were, they offered support and thank yous through emails, and appreciation for...
So we're good?
To support, yeah.
Go ahead.
I did just want to address, maybe we should, when Mr. Coombs is here, earlier...
Well, that was my, I was just going to leave the question till last.
Well, the sewer project for Love's, and that's not, I mean, as far as I was concerned, that wasn't really the, it's not for Love's, it's for that area, and the growth, and in my mind, I was thinking of this terminal expansion, with the things that are going on out there, where are these people going to live, and, and that seems like, for years, it's been a great place to develop, and kind of waiting for that water and the sewer to get there, and so, in my mind, it had nothing to do with Love's, it had everything to do with providing a service to that area.
Love's is still going to, because this will not get started, this sewer and water project to Jamestown will not get started before Love's Law gets going, so they're going to be up in short, so they're going to still have to go with their high-priced induction system, so it's going to be there, I mean, granted, I'm sure the option will be available for them to tap into it, down the road a ways, which then of course, that should help the residents smile a little bit out there, and that type of thing, because you recover some tap coughs and that, but I, I left that alone this morning from public comment, so we could talk and make sure we were all aboard, still with request of the Jamestown Rio Vista project, I know, I'll go back to some conversations, I know Commissioner Lloyd had some consternation with it, and that type of thing, and that's always welcome for you to bring up, anytime you wish to talk.
At this point, the majority has decided, so unless there was a change in that, I also support this board's decision, I'll just say, I do believe the Jamestown water, Vista water, your Jamestown water project is, has a lot of great points for growth and stuff, but I just have a hard time providing $10.5 million between two water districts when we cut the municipalities so far back, in fact, we're giving the Jamestown Water District more money than we are the four small municipalities combined, and I also know we made some significant cuts to the other municipalities, I'd rather see the money spread there, I do think it's a good project, but I, personal opinion, I, I think there was other priorities that we couldn't have looked at also, but that's just my opinion, but I do support the majority of the board, because that's the decision they made.
And your opinion is respected, and you're very welcome to say it, and we want to hear it, so I won't ever take that away. All right, so one more time, with regard to the Six Penny projects, as far as dollar amount, Green River's okay, Rock Springs has a request on the table to increase theirs, hospital's okay, Jamestown Rio Vista's okay, I'm going to believe the four small communities out there, Granger, Superior, help me out, Longsetter, and Fairlil are okay, and then that brings us to Reliance is okay, so the only thing I'm seeing left on the table is, if we, as a commission, would like to meet Rock Springs' request for that additional 360, and through the conversations, I believe that would come out of the county's sponsorship share of the hospital, to reduce it by 360, is that correct? Any more questions? And I will look at you as a commissioner, and say, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Sheinfield?
I would like to make the motion to give the City of Rock Springs the additional 360 as requested, which would bring the hospital's Six Penny allocation to 7.44, which is still above their priority request, and then would allow the City of Rock Springs to fund their request as planned.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Smith, any further discussion? Just to reaffirm, the money we're taking out of the hospital is out of an extra $600,000 over and above their projects, that was part of the county's allocation, that was placed in there, it still leaves them dollars well above their project, when I say well, about 200,000, so it's not taking away from anybody's project, makes sense? Commissioners, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries, will you please let your people know, Keaton?
Yeah, thank you very much, we appreciate your consideration.
Made that whole, and good luck.
We're to continuing on.
Thank you. All right, next thing on your list with Six Penny.
So the next thing that we need to address is the letter from Stiefel, which was the underwriter engagement relating to potential multiple securities transaction for Sweetwater County, Mr. D'Leon has reviewed this, he said it's non-binding, it does not specifically address the marketing aspect around it, and I think that that is due to the research that Stiefel is planning on doing ahead of time before, just moving forward with that plan. So, there's any questions?
My own, commissioners, questions, heard by Stiefel? Six Penny?
This does not require us to...
Do you take a motion or anything?
Well, it does, because you need, we need to sign it, but it doesn't require us to pay anything at this point in time, this is saying that we're going to be working with them, we agree to work, move forward with them at this point in time, and then my next step, if this is approved, is to set up a workshop, whether that's a call-in or in-person...
call-in or in-person with Stiefel and all of the different entities, so we know exactly what we're looking at bonding and those kind of things, the different projects and what our entities feel are appropriate and their concerns moving forward.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, commissioners? I would ask that Treasurer Rob Slaughter, you would please?
Mr. Chairman, you look to me on this. We have entered into these engagement letters in the past. We entered into the same type of engagement letter with respect to the potential on the lease purchase agreement. It's just simply authorizing us to work those agreements. So it's something we've done regularly in the past. As part of this process, it's something typically.
Okay, so we're good to go. I hear, we're good to go. All right. Any questions, commissioners? All right, commissioners. Ms. Schoenfield, you have a motion?
I'll make the motion that the commission approve the underwriter engagement relating to potential local securities transaction for Sweetwater County, Wyoming, with Stiefel, and allow the gentleman to sign.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, commissioners? With that, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. You okay, Roy?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. So we can move forward with that. Next up, dealing with six penny.
With six penny, just for all of the entities that will be involved in this workshop, I'm going to be out of the state during our next meeting and sort of be scheduled directly after that. So probably the last week in March.
Spring March?
Depending on who Stiefel, Alan is his name, is scheduled, so.
Okay, so, and that'll be a workshop?
Yes.
It'll be a workshop, so if it's, will there be decisions made at the workshop?
I think it'll mostly be, I think it'll be just discussion.
Discussion and action.
Discussion around concerns and how we're moving forward and everybody, you know, being involved.
All right, and then let's make sure that before we leave today, that you have a conversation with Mr. DeLeon and make sure we know whether or not we got to put out what kind of notice, if any. And we can get it out as soon as with the star, if you happen to pick a date for after when you get back. Anything else for six penny? All right, I'm gonna take privilege of the floor and I'm gonna look at our six penny partners out there and say, ask you a question. Is there anything we're missing up to this point? Or is there anything you feel we need to move quicker on? I'm gonna leave the floor open. Mr. Clender?
Yes. Could you provide maybe an outline of timing of what, of what you guys expect to see? It just feels like through the end of March, if we've already been marketing this in the past already versus, you know, now just jump, you know, now going into a workshop and still having not finalized stuff, just to see, you know, here's our, here's our executable timeline that we want to do and have down. It would be just great for everybody to kind of be following.
And if I can take a spin off that, it'd be wise to figure this date where it's on the ballot and back it all up as to marketing. And I think, John, would you be able to help?
Yeah.
This is something that I've actually discussed with Alan, with Stiefel.
Okay.
And that they were going to discuss in this phone call.
All right, sounds good.
So if everybody wants me to, I can schedule this phone call for next week prior to me leaving. I'm fine with that. If that, I mean, it sounds like this has been moved forward more quickly in the past.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to feel good that it was moving along the right direction because I had, I was not part of the process in the first one.
And I forgot, my apologies, but Lauren's exactly right. Commissioner Schoenfield is exactly right that Stiefel will be a part of this and help set up that schedule as well. Okay? Again, go ahead, Mr. West.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I mean, part of what we still have to figure out is how we're going to put these on the ballot.
Absolutely.
So marketing is obviously an important piece, but I think the next step would be how are we gonna, you know, combine them or not combine them and get through that, which obviously is gonna take input from all the municipalities. So that's probably the next step, I would think.
Yes.
Just to be able to determine now how can we market these and make sure everyone's in agreement and get the master resolution rolling and.
The sooner we get it out and start marketing and we can go out and help each other to get this thing passed with everything else that's going on, we need to, we need to get it out front and center.
I just mean that if some of these municipalities aren't in agreement with master resolution with the data with marketing plans.
Yeah, I hear you.
So I think we want to make sure it goes on board with that, so we can move forward.
Yep.
I'll call Alan in the next couple of days and then I can shoot an email out if he feels like we need to meet before I go to DC and then we can do that.
So, okay. Just before we go on, John, do you have anything to say or recommend with what you're hearing?
I'll talk with Commissioner Schoenfield.
Okay, very good, because we're all here to make it happen and help assist with it. Anything else with six penny? All right. With that, tab R, the six penny is agenda item is closed and we'll move on under other. And the first thing up is we have an additional item, approval of public depositories. Our, the steam, treasurer's here. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm not that steamed.
That's Steve.
Yes.
I know you are.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, annually, underwhelming statute 9 for 818, we typically have the commission approve each of our public depositories. Technically, underwhelming law, the commission has to approve those depositories one time. And as long as we have that on file, it meets the statutory guidelines. We have always had each of the entities submit applications each year. And typically, the first meeting of March, we have the commissioners approve those depositories. So I have got a letter today that I would like for the board to sign approving the same depositories which we had last year. They would be UNTA Bank, First Bank Northside, US Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, State Bank of Green River, RSNB, Commerce Bank, and Iraqi Mountain Bank as our depositories moving forward. Certainly, if someone were to come in and make application, we could bring that to the board at a future date. But these are the current banks that we work with and these are the ones that have made application for the next year.
Questions, commissioners? Nothing? I've got just one. You said something that was key to me. You said they can come in and make application.
Yes.
Do we send out a notice to them to make application or do we just?
We do not.
Okay.
Typically, if, if an institution wants to be a depository for Sweetwater County, it's incumbent upon them to make application to us to.
And once they do it, then they're on the list for renewal every year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering that. Any other questions? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Just need a motion to approve these public depositories.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? So we have a motion to approve the, the public depositories as presented by Mr. Slaughter? Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Much less themed than, so that's it.
Did you have anything else to say?
Well, with respect to, as we had spoken, with the news that's breaking today and what's going on in our financial world, I have very serious concerns about where our revenue picture is going to be in the near future. And this is just another thing that's going to impact that and could substantially impact that in the future. I mean, we typically have averaged over the last few years, $600,000 to $700,000 in investment interest. Obviously, we're bringing those, those balances that we have of investment funds down over the last little while to prepare for these buildings. We have less that's out there working for us now. In addition to that, we're going to be earning significantly less. So, you know, once again, just want the board to be aware, this is another in that line of many things that's helping to create the perfect storm for us where we are going to be facing a tightening of our belts, I'm afraid, over the next little while. You know, that and then looking at what's going on at the national level, it's here's gonna be that, what could happen within the state of Wyoming. So, yeah, it just, from, from my perspective, looking at the financial welfare of Sweetwater County, I think it's very important that we're looking at every penny that we're spending right now. I know each of you believes that, but it's just my, it's my position to bring that forward and each of the things that I can report to give you better information is what I want to. And this, as I say, this, this meeting kind of came out of nowhere today, kind of surprised the entire financial world, I believe. I talked to a couple of people this morning who were just, and this is kind of unprecedented for the place the way it was. It's, this had not been factored into the markets, so we saw the tenure treasurer was down to 104 when I went back to my office later. It's, it's having major, major implications. And as I say, this could be something that could be a blip. And certainly a month from now, things may have changed, they may find a cure for the coronavirus, everything may have changed and they may come back, but it may not. And once again, that's something we're gonna watch, prepare.
Comments, commissioners? Thanks for keeping an eye on it. Yeah, keep an eye on it. We need to, we need to make sure you're part of our conversations.
Especially going into the new budget, I think this is going to be very critical when we're looking at, you know, because as we've talked, you know, with the decreasing valuation and this potential and opening up some of the reserves that we've done throughout the course of the year and things like that, and we're depleting those reserves, we're seeing certainly more expenditures that are coming forward and we will continue to see that. So once again, we just, we need to be ahead of the relevant.
Very good. Thank you.
You bet.
Appreciate it. That being done, commissioners, I'd remind you that under the other section as well as a spot for if there's anything you wish to bring up for discussion at future meetings, this is the time to do it, you know? We'll make no decisions, but you're sure welcome to bring up any topic again, or bring up anything you want to put on the agenda because you missed a meeting. We're gonna keep those doors open, we're gonna keep operating that way and, because you are an elected official for this county and people expect you to voice your, their opinions through you, so we're not gonna close those doors. Okay? So is there anything under other we'd like to bring up? And of course, along with that goes, 10 o'clock Tuesday, week before our meeting, that's when cutoffs are set in the agenda and you as commissioners have the right at any point in time to request something on the agenda. It does not have to have my approval. You guys set the agenda, I just organize it.
Just Alex's approval.
There you go. Get through that door, you got it made. All right, with that, others closed, we do need an executive session for real estate that's not water, for real estate. And does anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for us to go into executive session for real estate. And is there a second? Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, so we'll go into that for the press. I really don't think with the real estate there'll be any decisions made, but you're certainly welcome to hang around in case something pops up that you're not aware of. Thank you, you have a good day. Thanks to me and your board. Okay. 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 All right, I will bring us out of the executive session, back to regular meeting. There were, we had discussion on real estate where no decision was made, and we also included a short conversation for personnel where there was no decision and that type of thing. So with that in mind, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We got a motion to adjourn. Meeting over. Good job.